Yeah.
March 2nd. Anyway.
Third, yeah.
Um, anybody have any questions on planning commission? I guess we should call this meeting in order first. Now, anybody have any questions on planning commission? You sure? All right. Either way, legislative compostable plastic bag ordinance and memo.
Um, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if Jesse's here. I can certainly do this. This is the second reading of this ordinance that will clarify that when the general plastic bag ban goes into effect later this year, that it will include compostable bags. Um, you'll recall Jesse's explanation that they don't work very well um, at at the county dump facilities. Uh, there are no changes to this ordinance from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? All right. Uh, street vacation ordinance and memo, Tim?
Yeah, this is also me. Council will recall that earlier this year, you had a work session discussion about a suggestion by property owner of property that abuts the four o'clock road right of way about whether the council would consider vacating a relatively small portion of that right of way that essentially is in the property owner's front yard. Council at that time indicated a willingness to consider the vacation. The method for vacating right of way is by ordinance. This ordinance, if it's adopted, um, will vacate the small portion of right of way that was discussed with the council earlier this year. By operation of law, when the vacation occurs, title will switch from the town to the adjacent property owner. We don't need to do a deed or anything like that.
All right. Questions for Tim? Oh, all right. Uh, 2020 budget appropriations and 2021 rollover appropriations, uh, resolution and budget theory, a public hearing. Leslie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, oh, sorry.
I'd say you're in a cave.
Sorry. Um, so on an annual basis, we do adopt the budget. Any changes that we do to that budget throughout the year are done by resolution and supplemental appropriations, which is the purpose of this resolution you see tonight. Um, all of the items in the memo that are described should all be things that um, have been brought to your attention throughout the year. But if you have any questions about any of those items on the list, I'm happy to do my best to answer this for you.
All right. Questions on any of these items for 2020 or 2021? Carol?
So was I right when I read or when I saw that we have spent about 2.4 million in grants for 2020? Is that right? I mean, those would be COVID specific grants, not just not the grants that we normally apply.
Correct. Yeah, it was a little shy of 2.4. We were rounding there. Um, but yes, that is accurate between the FERC and the um, grant something directly to the business within 2020.
Okay, that's great to know. I had just been wondering that number for a while. So thanks for providing that.
Other Carol?
I was curious. Have we only spent um, 5,000 on our social equity efforts and on the equity project because I saw so much is rolling over?
Um, yes, that's correct, Carol. We um, the way the billing worked with the equity project, only 5,000 of their work was billed in 2020. And so the rest roll, we rolled over to 2021.
Got it. Thank you.
Eric, you're muted.
My screen just told me that, just as you did. Thanks, Leslie. We'll be ready for a public hearing tonight. Uh, resolution approving a notice of environmental use restrictions with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment concerning the second water plant site, Mr. Phelps.
Well, Eric, let me tee it up. Um, if I could, a- as a condition of the uh, approval by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment of the town's second water plant, uh, it was required that at the conclusion of the project, the town would sign a an environmental restriction in essence. Um, and this res- well, we're now through. It's now time to uh, get this document signed and recorded. Uh, and this resolution, if it's approved tonight, will authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. I've asked James to to uh, join us here because he can explain to you what impact, if any, the environmental restriction will have on the day to day operation of the second water plant. James?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Um, yeah, the condition as Tim has just explained was a requirement of the state uh, for if council recalls, we borrowed money from the state through the state revolving fund for the for the project. And as part of that, we had, we followed a lot of permitting processes, one being the environmental permitting. And as, and when we were going through that, we had a geotechnical report that resulted in um, finding some hot material or or some um, historic mining waste that had had the the items that are listed in the covenant arsenic, beryum, and um, manganese. And as part of that, once that was discovered, we had to come up with a um, materials management plan per state requirements. And as part of that plan, we just had to, we had to um, indicate how we were going to deal with that material. So we, when we excavated on the site for all the infrastructure there, we put that site temporarily on the McCain parcel. We had to map that. And then we went through a um, a beneficial use determination plan, whether or not to dispose of that material. And the only way to dispose of it would have been to take it to the front range. And it would have been pretty costly to do so, but we were also had the option after that determination was made to um, basically re um, use that material to back on the site when we were burying all the items that we um, buried on the site, I guess. So as part of that, that material that we found originally on that area is now basically buried right back in that same location. And we did have to do a stratification map to show exactly where it is in relationship to the area. And we had to keep it a certain amount of feet above the groundwater table. And we also had to put an engineered cap on it. And as part of the the covenant and restriction, it just says that we can't do, if we dig in that area, we have to let the state know. Um, in terms of it presenting any kind of um, harm or health hazard for the community, um, it it doesn't present any um, issue for us unless we were to to disturb it. But at this point, it's basically uh, put back just as we found it. And we have no need to go back in and disturb it. Um, also, I know council may have a question regarding the rec pass. Uh, the rec path that's currently located on the east side of the parcel and then the rec path that will is um, proposed on the north side of the project. Um, those two areas are not included because we didn't do any excavation for this project in those areas. So they were not subject to the same environmental covenant. So um, be happy to take any questions if uh, that didn't address all the questions. Kelly?
Hey, James, um, since I guess this material wasn't brought to the site, it was found on the site during excavation, right?
That is correct.
So has the same geotech survey been done where we're about to put Alta Verde and like other um, family housing projects all around this?
Um, I don't believe there has been any material that's been found as part of that. I don't know. I I'm not sure if there's been a geotechnical report that's been um, completed at this point. Again, we were following processes. You know, kind of through the requirements and the regs of the state for this project.
Because we were using their money.
Because we were using their money. And I can tell you that we did a lot of um, test on bore sites on that property. And it was only one location that we found this material. And but that was enough to to flag it that the material was hot. And so then we were in, had to follow all the other processes as part of that. So um, hopefully that answers your question, but no, I'm not.
Well, it answers the question of whether we know that there's any other um, in the location, but I guess my question is uh, should we be making sure that there's not any other sites of these material before we start excavating for the other the housing developments in the area?
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly look into that. That might be a good question for um, Shannon when she comes on. I know that she's involved in that from kind of the engineering side. And I don't know, Nicole might be able to answer that question whether or not we've done any of that geotechnical reports yet, but it would follow the same type of process. If we did run into that material, we would just have to manage it and then make sure that we're either burying it back on the site and in the proper, you know, stratification area that's out of the groundwater or dispose of it properly.
But didn't it say somewhere on here, like you can't have any family? Wasn't I reading that in here that there, like people can't live on?
Daycare centers.
Yeah.
For our, for our, our site specifically, that was what the state did require, that there couldn't be any of those other uses, those residential uses. It was only intended and um, the purpose was for this industrial use only um, under this condition.
Okay.
Kelly, Kelly, it's my understanding um, that as part of the the due diligence, uh, Gorman has done studies with respect to the environmental site. Nicole, do you?
Yes.
Confirm that?
Yeah, we have done really extensive work out there. Um, it's a condition of um, getting the local housing tax credit. So we've done a phase one and a phase two um, environmental assessment. So um, there were no concerns or needs for actual like um, mitigation like what James is talking about. So at least for Alta Verde, we've done that. I don't know what's been done on Stan Miller. Uh, for some reason, and Lori might know, um, I don't know if there's been a phase one done out there. Um, but at least for Alta Verde, um, I I don't, we don't have any concerns.
That's great. Thanks, Nicole. Thank you, James.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other questions?
Isn't it safe to say that mo- a lot of us are living on that stuff anyway? Like, you know, like, and have been?
We are.
And look, look how well I turned out.
Missed the point in Wellington. I'm pretty sure that's all that stuff.
Yeah.
That was an old super fun site, wasn't it?
Used to be the town dump. We missed the point.
Oh, that's right. Uh, okay. That's it for legislative. Thanks, Tim. Uh, we got public projects update. Hello, Shannon Smith.
Hello, Mr. Mamula in Town Council. Um, they did do a phase one on the Stan Miller property as well, Kelly, to close the loop on that one. There was no concerns. Um, so in the memo, we gave a brief update on the Ski Hill Road sidewalk project, concrete replacement and overlay. And then I also posed the question if council is ready to move forward with awarding the design for the phase three of the South Gondola pedestrian connection project. I can go into more detail on that project if we need to.
Okay, so first, does anybody have any questions on that phase three for the South Gondola? Okay, show of hand, everybody okay with awarding this? That is a unanimous raising of hands, Shannon.
Do we want to extend the limits of that project? It was only contemplated to be from Ski Hill to Watson. The first go around, we could go a little further north and look adjacent to North Gondola is one part of the expansion. And then also, I think it would benefit us to do survey work to the south along the riverwalk. So we have that data if we want to do any in-house design or bring Norris on for further phases as we head south.
So something that Rick and I have talked about a couple of times now is you know, once we get out of COVID, um, trying to I hate to say fix the riverwalk, but really in the end, the riverwalk is not being utilized for its original intent. You know, it has gone from being, you know, a remarkable pathway next to the river to being the transit area for trash trucks and delivery trucks. And it would be nice for us to start moving into that direction where we could start maybe some planning, you know, we want to connect the bike path eventually past our parking structure connected on either side. I I think it's time for us to start looking at that and see if there's some things that we can do to make it better. So I would like to see some some expansion to the south in particular.
I I'm in agreement with that, Eric. I I mean, I'd like to see some master planning all the way to the Maggie Pond or
Yeah.
to really taking the bike path, you know, kind of through that Main Street Station property and out, you know, so if the Blue River path is ever done, there's a connection.
Rick, you were gonna say something?
Uh, I want to, let's be clear on what, how much we want to engage to the south because I mean, I I would say, I think the scope of what we should do with Norris, my recommendation would be that we use Norris because they're part of the original bid for the parking structure to look at uh, basically from Ski Hill to French. And then uh, and then we engage the survey to as a first step in going south and then and then we then we could reexamine uh, potentially for 22, maybe more of a maybe we pick it up by pockets or we do a full master plan of uh, of that whole area just to see how it could look, but um, I think it's, you know, we're going to be focusing our efforts on these other, you know, phase three first. So it might, you know, we might want to not engage them for the full master plan of that whole area right now would be my only recommendation.
Yeah, anything we could tie in, I think it'd be great. Dick?
No, I I agree with Rick, but I think we should look at it as the next phase and and get him to throw us a number, get him, get him to give us a bid because that'll at least get him thinking about it, you know, so if it, if, you know, when they're planning the the northern part. But yeah, I would agree. We don't want to slow down that northern part or or add undue expense at this point, but um, I think we should start planning, talking about it, um, and create another phase for that.
And just here, we're talking French to Watson?
No. That'd be, well, right now, we do, we, our first priority is is the parking structure. So that's Ski Hill to Watson. But we would, it, we would widen the scope to allow them to include Watson to French. Right? And then we would survey the area south of Ski Hill along the river.
Thank you. And you know, part of that has to be that this bike, this bike path piece has to be part of this. So we're going to have to go south of Ski Hill anyway, figure out how we're gonna it's still the thing that makes no sense. We have a bike path that goes through town that stops at Ski Hill Road, and then you have to ride down the busy alley to get to the other side of it. So that that needs to be part of the scope of this is figuring out how to tie that in as best we can.
Yeah, certainly the the crossing of Ski Hill Road needs to be a part of the scope.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. But I want to pull that co- that initial parking structure committee back together again when we're looking at this so we can work through some of these things with that, with that.
We'd be ready to convene, Rick, that, you know, team again, probably May, June. I'll get the survey work started as soon as we're confident in spring being here. And then, once we get that base work done, probably May, June, we can start sitting down with Norris and working on that. It'll be great if we're gonna be ready for in-person meetings because this will be a big big design effort to really get this correct. So I want to make sure that we take the time to really, all the possibilities and hear everybody's input.
Yep. Well, certainly by then we'll be, I mean, we, we should be able to meet outside and be walking it and talking and doing all that. So, yeah.
I mean, potentially by then the team can be vaccinated too. You know, by by Mayor June, I mean, a lot of people will start getting vaccinated at the end of the month now, so that'd be cool.
All right, so we'll move forward with extending that scope uh, to look at the area to the north. Also, we'll start the uh, the phase three design uh, for the parking structure, and then we'll start doing our our survey and then start thinking about what that next phase will look like as we go south because I I think there's a real missed opportunity there. One thing we've learned from walkable main and that is how we spread, how we try to spread people out and we have our narrow crowded sidewalks and and uh, I think we have an opportunity to really pull more people to that area. So.
And the big part of it is finished, like the concrete's there. If we just need to
I clean it up.
Yeah.
Make it attractive.
How to clean it up.
We might have cut through the concrete for fiber in a lot of areas, so that
Right, that's not.
Ready, prepare there.
Yeah.
Diving, words on the potholes.
Um, does anyone have questions on any of the other projects that we reported on or anything else happening?
All right. Thank you. How about, oh, how about PNT? Anybody have any questions on the parking structure? Pretty awesome pictures.
We had red, white, and blue over there for a tour today. It was really great.
Are we doing the best we can to recycle as much refuge from that structure as possible?
As in construction?
Yeah.
Stuff free?
Yeah, like, I mean, I I just saw that Visqueen and all that, some of that other stuff. And I don't know if you, if there's anything we can do with that, or that's just kind of pot and parcel of putting up a
Unfortunately, there isn't a great market for recycling material, but we, they are very conscientious of not being wasteful and doing what we can.
Okay.
Need some lumber, Jeffrey.
I'm asking for a friend.
I am looking at dumpster anytime.
Behind me yelling at me. Okay.
Ask for that.
All right. Anything else for Shannon? Thank you. I have questions on the uh, bus that are transit rider information? Now, as you can see, people are still riding the bus, just not as many because of what we've been doing because of COVID. So I'm assuming this comes back full, full bore once we get rolling again.
Well, at least it won't be so red once you know, another week or so, right?
Right, 15.
Yeah.
I know, I'm waiting for my numbers to look really fantastic, starting the 15th. We were closed last year.
Yeah.
All right, uh, childcare update. What do we got? Hi, Cory Ver.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, the childcare advisory committee had a regular meeting last Wednesday. Uh, the minutes are in your packet. There are any questions?
Um, Cory, do you know how the, oh.
Go ahead.
How are the um, how are the vaccinations going with the teachers? Have you, do you get any updates?
We did, actually. We spoke about that at the meeting and um, it's going very well. They did, uh, most of the centers did start kind of phasing them a little bit just due to some symptomatic issues um, that we've seen across the board. Uh, most, everybody that has decided to get the vaccine um, has already had their first vaccine and now they're moving on to the the second one.
Okay, thanks.
Decided to get the, the, some people have decided not to get the vaccine?
There are some people definitely that have decided not to get the vaccine. It's not
That works.
Can't require it. Yep. I don't know the numbers. Um, Kelly, do you remember? Did they say that? I don't think anyone gave us numbers as far as
I think on average, it's 20 to 30% right across the board, people that are complaining.
Do they refuse to floss too?
There are different health reasons that people feel like, you know, I think as more information comes out, more people are going to take it. And then also, um, they're suggesting that teachers who've had or people, anyone who's had it the last 90 days doesn't need the vaccine yet. So we do have, you know, several teachers fitting into that category. So as far as the number that are uncovered, I'm not really sure.
Is is Little Red open again yet?
Yeah, um, so each of the schools has gone through this, but um, most recently was Little Red and, you know, they tried to stay open um, after an admin person got it, um, because the admin person had some limited exposure within the school. And then several other teachers got it as well. And um, one was asymptomatic and then a student got it. And so at that point, it was suggested to us by medical people that um, that they shut down for a few days, just get it deep cleaned and ask that everyone gets a test. So teachers and students alike. So that's where they were last week and then they opened back up on Monday. There are a couple of classes still closed, but that's because those folks are quarantined due to direct exposure.
It's not over. No.
Especially if people uh, don't want to get vaccinated.
Or floss.
Floss.
All right. Any other questions for Cory? Cory, um, do you want to talk about um, your appointment?
Yes. Um, so Scott Perlo is one of the members of the advisory committee and his term is ending or has ended actually. Um, and the committee would, has requested that town council reappoint him for another three-year term.
Anybody have a problem with Scott being on for another three years? Okay, so we'll have a, have you sent out a script for tonight?
Uh, Kelly has it.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Uh, committee reports.
Housing.
Do you have something to add?
Eric?
Yeah.
Can we do housing?
Sure.
Yeah, Lori's got uh, an update.
Lori, how about it? Who?
Um, thank you. Um, I just wanted to um, do a real good, a real quick check in with the council. We had a meeting this afternoon and um, talked a lot. Um, and I think Jeffrey was very, very depressed because we were talking just about the pressure on our housing market right now. It is just, the market is crazy and locals trying to get units. It's extremely difficult. Um, and I think the employers are feeling it with being able to to hire. Um, um, so we we talked a lot about that, but there was one issue that came up that's time sensitive that we want council feedback on. Um, and it really has to do with our block 11 project. Um, Nicole pulled up on your screen. Um, the site plan, this is where the council has already authorized us to do um, two buildings um, south of Coto Flats. You can see it's building A and building B, and those are really a redo of the existing Coto buildings. Um, and we tucked them as far to the east as we could. Um, we had to respect, there were certain utilities that had been installed when we thought we were going to do um, brick 365. Um, and so we had to cite the buildings um, in a, in a manner to avoid those utilities. Um, and and then we twisted them so that they are true south and will maximize our opportunity for solar so we can get to that net zero. Um, but you kind of see, this is um, you know, the total site is is probably about two acres. Um, and um, it's mainly on um, lot seven of the the plat, which is block 11. So the balance of that lot is still going to be about 16 acres um, plus the four acre or the eight acres for the school district site. So still about 25 acres remaining of block 11 to the south. But as we sort of configured our site, um, you can see there's a sort of a remnant parcel that ends up being created by our our buildings and Floridora. And that remnant parcel, um, you can see we've got a building C, um, sort of just drawn in on that remnant parcel. Um, because it seemed kind of, um, it it would be awkward just to have a remnant parcel there. Um, the bulk of that parcel is actually a detention pond that's underground that can't be built on. Um, that's kind of on the north side. You see some lines going east, west. Um, that's actually underground detention can't be built on. Um, but on this remnant parcel, um, we had our design team just sort of fit a third Coto building um, just to kind of round out the site and maybe create a good transition from Blue 52 into whatever is going to happen on block 11. Um, and so what we wanted to do, you all all authorized us to do the two buildings, 18 units. Um, but we wanted to come to you and see if there's any sort of um, desire to move forward with the building C, which would add nine more units. Um, and just really fill in that remnant parcel. It's time sensitive because we're going to be submitting to planning commission in three weeks. Um, because we want to, you know, go vertical this summer and um, obviously, those nine units in that building C would be um, a lot less expensive to um, a lot less expensive to build as part of this project that we're doing right now. And, um, we feel that the need is so great, um, for these rental units, um, that if we could add nine units right now at sort of a, a lower price because we're bringing it in with an existing project, you don't have to re-mobilize. Um, and there's some thought about maybe, um, doing sort of master leases with local employers or even the daycare centers to try to find some, uh, I mean, the, the carriage house right now is down seven teachers, um, out of eighteen. So, you know, the, the need for housing for childcare or for merchants is just, um, really, really severe. So, um, wanted to get your, um, sort of direction of whether we should include building C in our entitlement process, which we're going to submit pretty soon. Um, and then we can have the GC price it if, if, if cost turns out to be an issue or we're not getting these buildings for what we think and want to get them for, we wouldn't have to build it, but we could go through the entitlements, get the GC to include it in their bid and then, and then figure out, um, we think it makes sense to do it now as part of this project. And then it kind of creates a clean line for the balance of block eleven.
Hey Laurie, can you zoom in on, on building three a little bit better?
Yeah, let's see if, um, Nicole is running that for me. Um.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, or orientate, orientate them on what that bottom road is that's currently running by Blue Fifty-two. On the other side of that road is that parking for the park, right?
Yep, yep, yep. This is Floridora on the, um, on the east side. And so it's just an extension of Floridora with sort of a roundabout there and, and then, um, block eleven, um, is kind of a, a, a big piece of property that ultimately we'll have to figure out what to do with. But it kind of just completes this line right here and gets us nine units for, I think, a really good price since we're going to be mobilized and building out there already.
What type of units, Laurie?
What's on these are, um, the building is just like the, in the original Coto buildings. They're all one-bedroom units. And, you know, we have, um, the two buildings that you can kind of see on the sort of upper right-hand side of the screen. Those are the two existing Coto buildings. We use those right now. One is for town employees, one is for county employees. Um, and they are just whole and they, they really meet the needs of local employees, nice, big one-bedroom units.
Okay, how's everybody feel about this?
Oh, one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more question. We're okay with parking with, with.
Oh, yeah.
Nine additional, we're okay?
Yeah, as, as, as part of this, we're actually going to add a few more parking spots for Blue Fifty-two, um, on the north side of the property there. And we're good, this, this is not the exact final plan. We're going to actually convert some, some of this parking along the drive to head in. We are going to be very good on parking.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm completely supportive. Thank you for this solution.
Kelly?
Yes, definitely, yes.
Dennis? Dennis, you good?
Where is Dennis?
He's right there in the middle, not muted.
And it seems like a really good idea to me. Thanks.
Uh, Dick, I know you're on the committee.
Yeah, absolutely. The committee was in favor.
Jeffrey, you too?
Yeah, I was, the committee was in favor. I'm in.
Uh, Carol?
Yeah, I'm completely supportive.
Okay, me too. I think this is a great, uh, great way to do this, Laurie. Great job.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, you want us to discuss some of the, of the other stuff? We talked about it in this, or do you want to do it in the meeting when we report later?
No, I'd like you to talk a little bit about what you told me today. I think it's important for not only the council to hear it, but also the people that are listening.
Yeah, because I'd like to, it's nice to have Laurie here to, to get the facts straight. So, you know, we, we did a lot of talk about, you know, potential, um, but we're not going to solve employee housing, but can we move the needle some? And we, we looked at a lot of the, the up, the, um, sites around town. You know, a lot of the infill sites and, and, you know, kind of prioritized a little and gave input to staff and, um, very, very interesting conversation. And then we were talking about the impacts and, and how we could, can mitigate any of the impacts and short-term rentals came up. And I know we have a discussion coming and, and Laurie shared some facts that, that I thought were, were, were quite pertinent at this point. And, um, and that was that in the last fourteen months, we've added, Laurie, thir- three hundred and how many short-term rental licenses?
Three hundred and thirty.
Three hundred and thirty. And, and then we started looking at where they are. And, and I was shocked to see sixteen of those licenses are in Gold Camp. Um, there were, there were some in Valdezare, there were some, I mean, they were all over our employee, our workforce, um, traditional workforce, um, locations. And that, that was very, um, unsettling to me, to be honest. That, that, the, the rate at which we're losing our long-term rentals to, to, to short-term rentals. So I, you know, I, I asked Laurie to really refine that data and, and she was going to reach out to the, to the, uh, county and kind of look at French Creek and, you know, and some of the other traditional places that might be out of town and, and really so that when we do have our discussion, um, really have, have that, because to me that's compelling, um, information for us and, um, and have it, um, you know, have really that, that information prepared and, and shared with us. But I wanted to share it now just to, to have everybody a little, little time to think about it before we have our, our full discussion.
Yeah, Rick.
Can I just clarify, uh, Dick, that, that information, uh, was just produced by our, actually out of finance for our short-term, our short-term rental compliance. A position is going digging in deep and, and looking at, you remember the issue came up of, of the, the large increase that we're seeing in short-term rental licenses year over year. And so that's when we started to dig to try to better understand what, what's generating that increase? What, what's it look like? And so, you know, we looked from January one, twenty twenty through the end of February, uh, twenty twenty-one and to see that those are the total of new licenses that weren't there, uh, prior to that. And so then we tried to look at what was, um, you know, what a historical use of that particular address. And, and in some cases we have good information and others we don't. But what we do know is it wasn't being used. Uh, a lot of them, some of them were being used as a short-term by a previous owner. And this is a new licensee, but probably two-thirds of those uh, weren't being used as short-term rentals prior to January of two thousand twenty. So, um, that's, you know, that's, that's a lot of, of new licenses that were, those homes were either being used as a second home, um, as a primary home by somebody, uh, or as a long-term rental. Those are about probably the three different types of uses we would have seen in those homes before. So.
And, you know, I think there's an important, there's an important, um, bit of information that we need to start pushing out as a council. There has been some, um, there's been some letters to us, there's been some letters to the editor that, you know, short-term rentals, free market, none of our business. However, the more these things disappear from the market and the less people you have working in this community, the less anybody's going to want to stay in your short-term rental because there won't be the services for you. So this is absolutely our business, you know, and it's not just homes in the Highlands. You know, that's what we hear. This is just million-dollar homes. You guys, this is none of your business. It's not just million-dollar homes. This is condominiums and Airbnb and VRBO and single rooms and things all over the community now that are stripping away places for locals to live. And I think everybody that listens to the council on these calls should be very worried about where we are trending with the short-term rentals in this community. Look, I support how we run our community as a short-term rental community. That's most of our bedbase. You cannot violate that, that happy medium between places for people to live and work in the community and then where the guests live. Because once it goes the wrong way, there are not enough people work in this community, you will not have the experience for your guests at your short-term rental that you want. So everybody should be really, everybody that listens and, and even owns a short-term rental should be very worried about this trend. This is not good for anybody. No matter where you are in our community, this is not a good way for us to operate. So we're going to start having the, these discussions. That's why this council wants to have a discussion about short-term rentals and see if we can start doing something to influence, you know, where we are on this needle. So I know there's been a lot of, you know, there's been a lot of stuff thrown out and I get that whole mentality of let the market take care of it. The market cannot take care of this stuff all the time. It just doesn't work like that. So.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted Rick to bring this, or, uh, Rick and Dick to bring this up.
So there's a question was asked in the queue about what's our total number of short-term rental licenses? It's, uh, over thirty-eight hundred. Uh, thirty-eight hundred and change is the, is the total number. Uh, am I, I'm pretty close, right, Leslie? She'll tell me if I'm off, but, you know, we used to be around thirty-six, but now we're seeing that up over thirty-eight hundred now.
Yes, it is in, um, oh, sorry, we didn't do financials here. Yes, it's right around thirty-nine hundred.
Thank you.
You know, and I.
We.
Go ahead.
Do we have a mechanism to track unemployment in Justin Birkenridge or Summit County? Like, for instance, I, I feel like this is going to come to a head, especially this month when so many people have moved away because of the pandemic, because, you know, now all these STRs are coming online. We're, I know I've noticed, you know, anecdotally shortage in, in staff when I go into restaurants, retail, that sort of thing. Um, is there a way to track that? How many available jobs there are?
Oh, I don't know about that, yeah.
I don't know, um, at, at a town level. I mean, the county report just came out today about unemployment countywide, um, with some statistics in there that are terrifying.
But she's asking a different question. She's asking how many open positions are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I'm filled with.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's almost like we have negative unemployment or we will.
Yeah.
Things get, get fired back up.
That's what I'm thinking is that, that's, that correlates to with the short-term rental conversation and how it's, it's out of balance.
I honestly think that when we look back on the effects of COVID, the long-lasting effects, I think when people get vaccinated and, and, you know, the health issues are resolved, I think, you know, that they will go away. The health issues could go away in time. But I think the kind of the change of demographics in our community, you know, due to the, just the influx of folks coming in here because they wanted to ride out the pandemic. And a good way to do that is to buy property and, and hang out here until it was safe to go back to where they're living before and then short-term the place. I think we're going to check, see not only a change of the kind of residential habits, but also demographics in our town that could reflect a, a community that we're not, we're not used to and perhaps even not comfortable with. So, um, I, I think this is something we, we need to deal with. Because it's not going away.
Laurie, can you talk a little bit about what was in the county memo? What did the?
Um, you know, I, I looked at it real quick and filed it to read later, um, but, um, um, we could provide that, send that around. It was a really great, um, analysis of jobs and, and jobs lost as well as unemployment rates. So, um, by, by Summit County, Eagle County, um, we can, we can send that around. Did you get that, Rick? I'll send it to you.
Hey Laurie, as these, as, as we're going to have this discussion, hopefully we can look at some other towns and figure out how to incentivize people to keep their units.
Yeah.
The workforce. You may already have that, but I think that would be a good part of the discussion coming up.
Well, a lot of that was, you know, housing helps, um, but we're not getting any applications for housing helps right now because the market is just too, the, the, for market rate units, the value is just too great right now. So, you know, the opportunity to do housing helps, um, and get a deed restriction on those units is dried up for a little while. It'll come back. Uh, but yeah, the issue of long-term rental incentives came up too. So that's on our list to see if any other communities have some things around incentivizing long-term rental. Um, but yeah, it's, um, pretty tough just because, you know, there's, there's, the properties are going for so much and there's so little inventory. We talked about a typical, um, good market here. There'd be a thousand, um, units listed on the MLS and right now there's like a hundred and sixty. So it's just like the minute they come on, they are gone. And locals just can't compete and get in there. They can't use housing helps because they've sold before they could even talk about it. Uh, we can't buy them because the prices are going up so quickly by investors that we can't get them under our buy downs. Um, so, you know, we've got to figure ways to preserve some of that existing inventory because we, as we always say, we can't build our way out of this and we need to preserve community.
I do want to make sure we're all working with the same number on those numbers of units that switched from second home owner occupied and long-term rental. That was a hundred and sixteen units.
They switched, but we have over three hundred new, new licenses, right?
Um, so yeah, there was in their units that were previously short-term rentals. We've separated out the condo hotels as a different license type, and then we had some new construction as well that was counted in there.
Still a hundred sixteen, still a big number.
Yeah, that's at least a hundred and sixteen employees or a hundred and sixteen units we would have to build.
I mean, when you think about.
Just can't keep up.
Right? We're very excited about building eighty units at Alta Verde right now. And, and in less than half the time, we lost a hundred and sixteen. So, you know, we lost fifty, we lost like a net fifty units before we could even get out of the ground at Alta Verde. That is not a tenable situation for us as a community. So.
So while, uh, I'm, we haven't scheduled the time to come back yet, but, uh, it'll be within the next uh, three to four meetings. Uh, we want to make sure there, I'll tell you, there's not a lot of new information. You know, this is a, a discussion that we had a couple of years ago. And there's not a lot of new information since then, but there are, we're in a different world right now. We're seeing different dynamics going on. We're seeing the things that Eric just described happening that at a rate that we weren't seeing when you made certain decisions two years ago, which may cause you to look at this a little differently.
Yeah. And Laurie, when you're preparing for this, what I'd like to see is what have we built? What have we bought? You know, what have we sort of attained on one side and then what have we lost? I think that's going to be an important piece of this. So, you know, we discussed that with, with like two councils ago. It'd be great for this council now to have those same discussions with new information and, you know, where we are today. So.
It's interesting. I mean, we've been tracking what we've added and, you know, since two thousand, on average, forty-three units a year. So, you know, that's kind of the, what we've added, but the getting to what we've lost is harder because, you know, we're, we're losing it to short-term rental. Um, we're losing it to pure retirement. People just moving in and retiring in a unit that used to house a workforce. Um, we're losing it to the remote workers who have decided to stay up here and just work remotely because they can. Um, but their job doesn't, you know, support the local economy in terms of workforce. So, and we're losing them to all sorts of different uses of those units. And we know what we've added, but getting to the loss is really hard, but we'll, we'll, we'll scratch our heads and see what.
Even if you have to make some estimates about it.
Yeah.
We could go back further than, uh, January of twenty, like we did, Leslie, right? We could, I mean, we could go back three years and see what we've lost in the last three years and, um.
The one thing that we can't get at is something that Laurie brought up, and that is, um, switches between different types of non-short-term rentals. So if someone did previously long-term rent their property and now they, um, now it's owner occupied or they've chosen not to rent it and it's a second home, we actually don't have data on that that's reliable. We really just have data on where they licenses as short-term rental or not. So likely that number of, um, the number of units we've lost is probably even greater than a hundred and sixteen related to people that might have moved here.
We, we can't influence that other piece, though.
Yeah.
The people that move here and they're going to live here, that, that's, you know, that's part of the community. What we can influence is licensing, how many short-term rentals we possibly allow in a community. I mean, there's plenty of communities that have done things as draconian is just not allowing anymore to, you know, all the way to open season. So I, I think we have a lot of things that we can discuss. I think the important numbers is how many places that a local used to live and work in this community are now being rented to guests in this community. Because those are, I mean, truly, you know, like I said before, those are opposite sides of the same coin. You need that. I mean, truly, you know, like I said before, those are opposite sides of the same coin. You need that one sector. To allow that other sector to enjoy themselves here and vice versa. Those people have to come so the businesses can run, but. You know, it is a balance. This is about a balance, not about just saying no more short term rentals. This is about balancing the number of people that can live here and work here and the number of people that can come in here. And, and vacation here is really what we're looking for. So.
I think one more thing that would be helpful as, as we review. All these numbers would be what restrictions we have put into place because when Rick brings up that conversation that we've had, you know, in the past. We did go over, you know, positive reinforcement, all of these other things to influence. Short term rentals. So that might be, and we landed at different places along the, the way on purpose. And so. That might be good information to include as well because I know this council is different than past.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful. Thanks for bringing that up, Aaron. And then just being able to understand what are the mechanisms that. What are the tools we have at our disposal to even regulate these?
Yeah, I was thinking about how. We have the licensing. I know that the licensing basically has to pay for itself and that you can't just like charge an exorbitant fee. But you know, I mean, we do charge for employee, we charge other businesses. To provide employee housing or some kind of square footage. You know, so I'm just wondering if that would even be something we could consider. Or if that's not even something we would be able to, a tool we would be able to use.
Do you have two parts of our license? One is the fee which you spoke of, which is we have the new accommodation fee and that's how we pay for our. Regulation software in the hotline and our employee that helps with short term rentals. Additionally, we do have the bolt. That is a licensed tax that was passed by the voters. So you can potentially increase it, but it has to be passed. That part doesn't have to be tied to costs directly like a Penas.
All right. Any other comments? That was good discussion, guys. Great. All right. I'll be excited to get to that one. Committee reports. Thanks, Lori. Any questions on transit, summit stage or police? Dick, you still on the police committee?
Yeah, I am and, and the chief, you know, updated is some on the, the body cameras. I know we, he, I think he updated. The entire council at one point, but the technology associated with those things is phenomenal. It's good. I think they're pretty cool.
I think I should be on that committee, but they won't let me.
Yeah, the ex cop. Shannon says no, buddy.
Yeah, Rick, Rick, you started it. You, you, yeah, you did your time on it.
All right, how about events committee? Any questions?
I have a comment. I saw the notes that there was a noted lack of language for using town of Breckenridge for revenue source. Example is a coaching services on trails. There is actually a mechanism through BOSAC where. People who want to use trails for such uses would apply. Through BOSAC and it is similar. To the Forest Service conditional use permit. I've, I've heard from a, from a close source that it actually uses information from the Forest Service. Application. So that is, there is a mechanism there.
Sounds like privileged information right there.
You feel, do you feel conflicted?
No, considering my source hasn't been applying, hasn't been using the trails for such uses recently.
I brought up to Shannon that I thought. When you get to the part about the fifty plus people as, as part of this trigger. I also feel that there are places in town that are town owned properties that should trigger a SEPA no matter what. Maybe under certain circumstances. So the Riverwalk Lawn for twenty people. In the middle of the day in July should trigger a SEPA. Whether it's twenty people or ten people or fifteen people, there are some events obviously that fifty people is a great trigger, but. I, I really feel that we have some areas that should be a SEPA trigger no matter, no matter what. So. Just so you know, I did that, bring that up to Shannon to, to take back.
I agree.
So what would, just playing devil's advocate, what if you had a family gathering of twenty people? I mean, would that?
You know, I think if they're, they want to have a family gathering on July fourth on the Riverwalk Lawn, I think, yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So I mean, I just, I think there are times. Places that, you know. The Blue River Plaza, I think, is a great example of where we need tighter controls all the time. There's some Jeffrey has been. Sort of wailing on having certain functions going on in there that they're not fifty people. It's like two people. But what they're doing, I think, is very impactful. So.
Yeah, but there's some rights, Eric, for busters and stuff like that. We don't have control over.
I'm not talking about a dude with a guitar. I'm talking about a. I'm talking about an organization selling things that is, that is not a first amendment right. So. Anyway, I just wanted you to know that I talked to her about that.
Yeah, because we did do some work on at least Blue River Plaza years ago and set some rules around that. But yeah, that. Yeah, updating all that stuff is probably a good, good idea.
Amenity club work session. Do we have, do you guys want to take a quick five minutes? Does anybody need?
Yeah, I gotta real quick.
Okay, real quick break and then we'll get on this. This will be lengthy, these next two items. All right, we are back in session here with town council. And talking about amenity club policy. Go ahead, Rick.
I just want, I want the council to know that the reason that we have Mr. Dudik back here is because we felt that. When we go back at this previous discussion, when we were discussing amenity clubs and how they operate and whether they should be included in this. I mean, whether interval ownership properties, time share properties should be included in amenity club definition. There were some questions that weren't answered. BGV. Mike and his staff took a stab at answering some of those questions which were put in your packet and. And we allow them to be here for the first part of this presentation. To kind of go through that material and to see if there's any other questions. That the council has of them. And then, and then they're done with that and you will have your discussion. But I want to, I want you to know that we're gonna watch this conversation very carefully because. Mike has a application pending. You know, for development that will involve, you know, future time shares and we cannot have any of our discussion. Address impacts on future or anything future. All we're talking about and understanding with Mike right now. Is historical data related to how his properties operate. So we can't cross that line and Eric and myself and Tim Berry will be watching for that pretty closely. And that's just important that we. We stay vigilant on that.
Thanks, Rick. Chris.
All right. Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. Very quickly, back here looking at amenity clubs again, previously on October twenty seventh. I think we got through a lot of. Issues that had support from both the task force we had previously put together. Made up of Steve Gerard, Low Moore, Graham Frank and Jack Wolfe. As well as had support from the planning commission that we've outlined in the attachment. We believe that. From going back to that meeting, we thought we had consensus on those items, but we'd also be happy to take any questions related to that. Think the big discussion point tonight is whether interval ownership and time share. Should be included under the, the amenity club definition. And so really with that, myself and Mark Truckee are here to take any questions from you, but. As Rick pointed out, Mike Dudik from Breckran Vacations is here. To assist with answering any questions that are carrying over from the previous discussion.
Okay, so. Mike, do you want to sort of fill some of this stuff in?
Sure.
As, as far as. You know, some of the questions that were asked before and how you guys handle your version of an amenity.
Right. Well, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to come back and talk to council. I appreciate it very much. Yeah, I think that. Reading through that, listening to the meeting on October twenty seventh and reading, rereading through the questions, I think that there are some. Misconceptions about how our product actually works and I think there's some data that supports. Should I think provide, historical data provides some assurances in, in the context of how we manage our. Product doesn't. Turned it into an amenity club. I would say that first and foremost that our, our data shows and you can go, you can go and look at this. This is twenty five years of data. Seven hundred plus keys on, on average annually today. BGV resorts, seven hundred and two keys through reservations from out of town guests for day use. Yield twenty eight thousand day use reservations annually. Okay, that's seventy, that's seventy eight BGV people per day. Or the, the on average per day they can use it, but also represents only eleven percent of our total use. We're a residential product. We do not market and sell as, as constituted. We not market and sell a standalone club. We market and sell fractional real estate that one in ten times people from the front range will come up and use. Occasionally locals that own will come in and use the workout facilities, but it's very limited use. The amount of vehicular traffic. Generated seventy eight, on average seventy eight per day. There's twenty two thousand trip counts at Tiger Road. In and out on, on a daily basis. The BGV day use only. Represents three tenths of one percent of all the cars circulating in the community. And that's just, that's the historical information. That's from FHU on the trip count and that's our reservations process. Which I think that would lead me to, you know, make sure that everybody understands that we have. Our, our process is, look, when we sell a week, we don't just sell fifty two, fifty two weeks. We have people to buy every other year. And so typically there's ninety transactions involved when we sell one week. If we had all those people once show up, our system would be swamped. We couldn't accommodate that number of people. And so fundamentally, what a fractional product does that has a day benefit is it restricts. The number of people that can come and use the benefits because it needs to, because otherwise the, the, the experience would be compromised. That's first and second, we're limited by the number of people that we can park on property. As the number of guests that we can accommodate. And that's a fundamental, I think a fundamental difference between us and what could be. Be in historically what could constitute an amenity club. By way of example, if we had a, in a resort or like it, we had a resort, one of the resorts had a hundred keys. On average, you would see eighty percent, eighty eight percent occupancy. But about seventy percent of that or seventy percent of the occupancy is people that are there for their week that they own. The rest of the occupancy is people that are renting a day here or there to, to fill in, just like they do at Beaver Run or other short term rentals throughout the community. What we do is we aggregate on average, we're able to project based on checking information. The number of parking spaces that we're going to use. The town code requires us to build one parking space per key that we have. And so if we have a hundred units and they're ninety five percent occupied, that doesn't mean we have ninety five cars. It might mean we have eighty five cars on property. And so what we do is we make available through a reservation system. The additional parking spaces are available for people to use the parking spaces. So again, it's important to know, to note that we're just not making it a free for all. It's a robust reservation system. It's clearly used more actively on the weekends or requested more actively on the weekends and the weekdays. We have. Plenty of local folks that use it during the week. Sometimes on a, you know, on a courtesy basis without having to make reservations. So they just don't need it because the parking spaces are available, but certainly on the weekends. We turn away more people, far more people than we accept to be able to use day use in the community. But in terms of an impact of fractional ownership, day use, the data is clear. Over seven hundred and two keys, seventy eight cars per day on average coming to Breckenridge, three tenths of one percent. It's just next to nothing. You wouldn't know that they weren't there. You wouldn't know that they're there. So I would say also that during this COVID period of time. You know, our reservation process has been refined. We've had to get to a place where we have not only. From, from a historical model, been able to. To reserve the number of parking spaces, but we also have to limit people's access to things like pools. We can't have, we can only have so many people in the pools or so many people in the. Arcade or so many people in the workout. And so not only have we, our reservation system focuses on parking, but it's been refined. To augment the, to restrict it even further, to restrict use even further. So. We think it's pretty clear that we're not in the many club. It's not how we primarily market. The use patterns are not in fractional ownership or it's not how it's primarily viewed. And used, we do not charge a daily fee. We never have. We won't. It's not a, it's not a per, per day, per use fee. People pay homeowners association dues and many people use zero days of day use. Some use and on average it's one to three per year and some may use a hundred and those may be people that live here. But on average, it's one to three day use per owner that's, that uses it. So. You know, one other thing too, that I think is important, why I think it's important to realize that from our view fractional is not part of an amenity club. Is the parking consideration. The town code requires our buildings to park. One parking space underground per key that we build. This code change and inclusion of fractional as part of the many club, there's a point six parking spaces. Per membership in an amenity club. That would, we have, like I said, we have ninety some transactions per unit. That translates into fifty plus parking spaces per unit if we were to be defined as an amenity club. The point being, we're just not, what we, what, what I'm here to say is, call us whatever you want, just don't call us what we're not. And the what we market, how we market is to sell a deeded interest in a real estate product whose primary focus is a residential stay. Eleven percent of our activity is non residential guests. It is a nominal impact on traffic in the community. All that said, as you guys consider. Be careful, and I'm being careful, future stuff, I, I think that our reservation system. Is something that could easily be, and it's, and says in this memo. Part of covenant on future buildings. And so we already do what you guys are contemplating doing with respect to restricting use. We're fine with that being part of, as an industry, fine with that being part of covenants on buildings. Saying that we're an amenity club, we're, we're not Planet Fitness. We're, we're not at Vale Ski Club over in Vale Valley. We're not those things. We're a residential product that eleven percent of the time has. Day, the day, non residential visitors.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, questions for Mike on any of that or anything that was in some of the. Information that we had earlier. Carol first.
Yeah, I wanted to, one thing I saw. In the answers and in the memo, it says in twenty twelve BGV instituted a minimum purchase requirement of a hundred thousand for primary summit, summit county residents. In an effort to minimize the impact to BGV amenities by local residents and enhance the in-house owner and guest experience. So this hundred thousand, does it only apply to summit county residents of a Denver resident? Purchases less than that? Can they still use it?
Yeah, good question. And yes, it applies to summit county residents. We internally have a nickname that has. Certain people's last names associated with this rule because what they were doing was buying a week. Themselves, then they'd form an LLC and they'd invite fifty of their friends to be members in the LLC and then they were de facto members. Of our club. And so we figured that out and I showed up at a birthday party at Peak Seven years ago in July and there were like. A hundred locals there and they were, they're, they were under two ownerships. I'm like, what? I'm like, what the heck is going on here? And that's what it was. And so we realized pretty quickly that there could be some swapping of the system if we didn't have restrictions, which is part of when I'm saying there's the opportunity and a look forward based on our historical information, have covenants on future buildings that give the town council the level of assurance that you require with respect to infrastructure, you know, burden in the community. You you can, you can accomplish that in covenant. Um, there's, it's not significant, uh, but you can accomplish it in covenant. And yes, it is, Denver people can come up. And like I said, on average, that's one to three on average per owner per year.
Okay, so there's no minimum.
Non-residential, not.
Denver.
No, for 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 a day, for day use. If you're eight oh four two four, eight oh four three five, whatever it is, you are subject to that minimum threshold because we don't want, we don't want, that will swamp the system. We can't have that.
Kelly?
When, when you say that it's a seventy eight average per day day use. Um, what's the average ma, you know, day use? Let's say during the peaks times of the year between Christmas or whatever is, what, what's the capacity? What's the? If it's seventy eight, I'm sure that's kind of factoring in, you know, day use in May. What's, uh, what's the average day use, say, in peak season?
See, that's a, that's a really good and fair question, but but our day use wheels, our, our reservation system, we take reservations that equal the parking spaces that we have. Okay, and so our availability of parking spaces depends on the residential occupancy in the resort. And so on average, between owner use and people, owners buying, renting additional time, eighty eight percent of the room nights are occupied. Now, that doesn't mean that there's eighty eight cars, those eighty eight percent room nights, right? So if, if a family comes up in one car, but stays in two units, then we get a parking space available. And we know that when they, when they check in, so that's how we can create the availability. So if you do seven hundred and two units, Jeffrey, we have at least seven hundred and two parking spaces. We actually have more than that because we got some surface slots at both Peak Eight and Peak Seven. Okay, so say we have eight hundred parking spaces. If we had, if we had seven hundred residential guests, cars parked there, then sometimes we have on average seventy eight, there might be a hundred, but it all is closely regulated by the total number of parking spaces. That we just don't, we don't, we just don't have the capacity, again, to take a reservation for a day use visit by any and everyone. We don't make them available to marketing tours. And part of that is, you know, when someone comes up and visit on a discounted package, because we want to preserve the value proposition of people buying with us too. We just don't give that away to people that are on typically on a marketing visit.
Mike, can I use, um, as an owner, can I use the facility if, say I call and say, I I'm not bringing a car up, I'm, or I want to park down in the, in the town lot, can I come up and use the facility? Or is it always strictly regulated to the parking piece?
It's, it, before COVID, it was Eric, and you could have done that. And now with COVID, you have to make reservations to use other components of the facility. And so, you know, like all of you guys have learned lots of different things, how life is going to change with COVID. Our business is changing to say, not only can we regulate the parking, but we can regulate use of the facility vis a vis reservations. So to your point, we can't, we're not going to have a, you know, the frat house come up and park in the gondola lot and have fifty, you know, fifty duds up at the pools. That's not, we, we've learned that that's something else. And one thing we know is that our owners, fractional owners are infinitely trainable. You, you, in that you, you signed up to take a time share tour to begin with, so you're, you're out for something. And then we start saying, here's how this works and give regulations for reservations to use your week and to exchange your week and then come up for day use. We train them on, on following the rules. And so that creates, um, that yields this eleven percent use rate of a, a, a day use per key, per key that we create.
Thanks. Kelly?
I think it's a very safe and reliable number.
Kelly, were you gonna ask a question earlier?
I was. I think it's been asked already, but I don't really think we got a, an answer, which is just that this seventy eight vehicles for day, per day is just, that's not really a useful number for us. We're trying to figure out the impacts on circulation and parking. And if there's only about eleven percent of the time that you're um, allowing additional people, then that's maybe like forty days. So that would be like seven hundred vehicles.
No.
Day, which is obviously too many, but I don't know how to get to a more realistic number because seven, just using an average doesn't give us really any information that we can utilize to understand the impact to parking.
Okay, so, so Kelly, I'm, we're maxed out in the total number of parking spaces that we have. That's what, that's the the max. So if I had zero residential guests, then I could take seven hundred reservations. But to the extent that we have six hundred cars parked in the facilities, then we only take a hundred and two additional vehicular reservations.
Well, you said you have more than seven, seven hundred spaces.
There's eight, eight hundred, because we got a couple of surface slots at both Peak Seven and Peak Eight.
Okay, so more like maybe two hundred, three hundred?
Again, that's where the, that's again, seventy eight vehicles, three tenths of one percent of all the trips. Say it is, say it is three times that on a, on a given day on a high impact day, which, which again, you have to understand that people use the product residentially in a far greater fashion in the times you think they would. In March and spring break, that's when people who pay the most for their weeks come and park their car and stay there for a week. At Christmas time, they come and park their car and stay there for a week. And so the, the price of admission in our product during the high impact times drives down the availability of the parking spaces. And so the seventy eight is, it fluctuates, yes. Is it higher times? Yes. But does it go in massive spikes? No, it doesn't.
Okay, so you, you just said the price of admission is more in like March and in
Yeah.
spring break time. So how, I mean, I feel like one of the reasons we said, or that it was said in here that we weren't that this isn't an amenity club is because there wasn't, uh, you know, a cost, a daily cost. But the people who belong are paying an HOA fee that includes like upkeep and use of the facilities, right?
Yeah, so we, when I, first of all, price of admission is a misnomer on my part. What I'm saying is that you can own a week in the summertime for a hundred bucks and at Christmas time it's five hundred bucks. That's what I meant in terms of price of admission. The HOA fee is, is consistent across every week of ownership. So whether you own the least expensive week or the most expensive week is the same. We did not charge a fee or recognize any increased cost for a day use visitor because there's not one. The only incremental cost, if anything, would be the cost of washing towels at the pool. And I mean, having more guests doesn't, doesn't increase the heating bill for the pools, doesn't increase the, doesn't change the fact we have to clean the pools or, or clean the hallways or anything like that. We're still doing all of those things. And so the, which is the key point to this, is that the residential component drives all of the cost structure to this. There's not an extra fee that anyone's charged to use the facility on a day use basis. And so somebody that uses the day use zero times a year pays the exact times, exact same amount as someone who uses it a hundred times a year. It doesn't change because there's not, there's not a, there's not a cost associated with that. And I can, and look, we've got, we don't have control of two of the boards. Two of the boards at Grand Timber and both at Peak Seven have boards where the entire resort is owned and operated by, or not owned by the, owned by these people, but the majority of the weeks are owned by them. They control the boards. They do not implement an additional fee for day use because they recognize that it has virtually zero cost to provide that ownership benefit. And that's why there's not a fee associated with it.
But there is a fee, I mean, there is a fee because you're paying for those, for the use of those as part of your week. I mean, if you didn't have a pool and if you didn't have all those extra things, it'd be a cheaper facility.
No, you have to have the pool for the residential component of it. I mean, we need the, we have the arcade, we have the fitness, we have the movie theaters, we have the, we have the pools, we have hot tubs, because that's part of the residential component. And that cost is covered in the annual operating cost of the homeowners association. If we didn't have a day use offering, the cost to run the resorts would not go down. It would not. It it would, it would, it would stay the same. It just, we have to have people there to answer the phones, to take the reservations, to process what happens on the internet, to reserve the weeks that people want to use, to reserve the nights that people want to use. All of the expenses, all of the overhead associated with operating a res, see, this is why it's important in my mind to delineate between residential component and a non-residential component of amenity club, is that the residential nature of our product drives our cost modeling. In that we have to do heat and electricity and, and maintenance and, and all of the property taxes. All of those things are part and parcel of the residential element of our product. The day non-residential is, and fractional is an incremental add-on that doesn't add on operating expense. If it did, we would independently charge for that, and we don't.
Mike, Michael, so when did this, this reservation system, how, um, fluid is that? Like, in other words, do you have people generally checking in for a week? And, and do you know, okay, for this week, we're going to have X amount of cars here and that will free up X amount of, a Y amount of parking spaces? Or is it, does it vary day by day? And secondly, when did, when did you implement, I'm sure you said this. Was it two thousand and twelve? When did you start implementing a day use reservation system? And how, uh, how is that enforced? In other words, you have, do you have doorman or something to kind of, you, they check people in on their day use?
Okay, so, so that question first. No, we, we have doorman at Peak Eight, not at Peak Seven, not at Grand Timber. Um, at Peak Seven in particular, I know you had asked about the Peaks Trail, Jeffrey, before. Um, in twenty twenty, we installed cameras on that north end of the building.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, I, and I, I, I read that and I appreciate that.
And, and we have, we have a note, we have a no tolerance for employees parking there. And we have terminated people on the spot for parking, you know, they're poaching the parking. With respect to access, they get a, a electronic band like a watch. And that's what you need to, you need to check in at the front desk to get a fob to open the doors, to get into the workout, to get into the pools. And so the notion that, just like a, a high-end hotel, then you can walk into a high-end hotel. You can walk into the Four Seasons in Denver. You're not walking into their pool area unless you have a key card. That's the same way the reservation system works inside the facility. So do we stop someone from walking in? No. Do we stop someone from walking in and saying, I'm going to go for a swim? Yes. Now, I know that there's a lot of people on this call whose kids have used my facilities, you know, illegally, you know. Um, so it's not foolproof.
When did you implement this system?
Well, you know, we've been at this for thirty years. And so the reservations processes have been, has been evolving. And we've had reservation, I mean, we've had reservations for parking from the beginning. Um, but how we, how we implement it, like with all businesses, it changes and improves on an annual basis. And I think that, like I said earlier, I think that the COVID things are going to also create additional levels of use restrictions that, that will fur, will further, you know, memorialize in the way we do business and that we think is appropriate to provide levels of assurance to the community that there can be covenants on future developments to say, this is how a reservation system ought to work.
Okay, um, so you didn't answer the question. I, I asked you too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, so how flexible, like, like in other words, will you, do you know on, on
Right.
Monday, how many reservations you'll be able to accept pretty much through Thursday and Friday?
Our IT guys are pretty smart. Um, we lost one with Liberto going over the town, but um, our IT guys are pretty savvy. And so we're able, able to model, um, with some degree of accuracy what the availability is going to be. So we are able to look at the, the point of origin of the person staying, whether they're local versus, uh, destination guests and, and look at what the historical vehicular parking patterns have been. Um, during, actually, Jeffrey, during different weeks of the year, because, you know, in our model, we number each week of the year. And so we're able to say that, you know, in week three, that we see seventy eight percent of the parking spaces are full with cars. And week twenty, which is, which is January, third week of January. In week twenty five in May, we could say that only thirty percent of parking spaces are full with cars or ninety percent. I don't know what the number is. It could be ninety percent because the majority of those people are coming from Denver anyway. Um, and so we're able to, within the different weeks of the year, accurately model what the availability is likely to be, um, and then make those available. And then as actual check-ins occur, then we can modify down or up the availability. But again, we're always, it's like any robust reservation system where you have an idea of, you know, Dick and Eric, or Dick has with reservations, an idea of how many people are going to show up and how many people aren't. And they can make an allowance to overbook, um, based on historical patterns of people. Not everyone in the books of day use reservation shows up. And so we're able to, you know, we've got, when you have twenty seven thousand owners and seven hundred keys, you're able to fairly reliably use math to determine what your availability is going to be. Okay, and our math is, our math is clear that we have eleven day use visits on average per one hundred keys that we built.
Dick? Dick, you're on mute.
Thanks, Eric. Um, you've quoted this seven hundred and some keys number. Does that include Grand Lodge on Peak Eight?
Yep.
It, when I was reading the memo, uh, you guys memo in our packet, I read it a couple, actually multiple times. It, I know it referred that Grand Lodge on Peak Eight is not in Destinmetrics. And I, I, I guess I, I assumed that, you know, that's pretty new property. There's not much history on that one. Um, so I assume that there really, there's not much data on that property in the, in the data that you, you provided in the memo. I- is there any data from that property in the memo?
It's that the Destinmetrics is about occupancy, is about rental occupancy. It's not about.
I use it weekly. I'm very.
Right, right, right. So, no, I mean, we've been open in phases. That's probably part of the reason why GCA has not been part of it, Dick, is that you know, we opened in sixteen with the first phase, which was basically the first half of the first building where Robbie's is. And then over, you know, six month increments added backwards towards Ski Hill Road, additional phases. And so it wasn't until December of two thousand nineteen that we were able, right when the, you know, we, we were able to get building three finally CO'd. And so the whole resort wasn't even complete and, you know, until very recently. So, but that said, with the amount that was available to be occupied and the parking spaces that could be occupied, those numbers, that data is there. And it is consistent with the historical information from the other resorts. It's, it's very, you know, when you get that level of, of data points, twenty seven thousand owners and their use patterns, the statistical variances get very, very small in terms of what happens.
Sure, I just, I just worry about where we're doing all this averaging, averaging to the year and averaging to the unit and everything. It's, I just, I, I worry, you know, when, when you have a property that, that's so, that has so little data to it, so.
Yeah, I, you know, and I, I hear you. And I would also just say that, you know, our high bar is the number of parking spaces that we're required to build underground per code. You know, take the surface out of the equation. That's what we're required to build a, and, and so, and that's what we use for, for providing day use. And so add those surface parking spaces to it. We're not part, we're not inviting guests, um, from the gondola parking lot to come and use the facility.
Aaron?
Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. One question is, when you reserve day use, is it for the full day or can you do it for a couple hours? And then is there multiple people? You, you, full vehicles per day?
Good question. And the answer is no to multiple vehicles per day. It's, there's one parking space. We have to assume that that's used for the entire direct, the entire day. Um, and so we're not actively, we're not by the hour counting the occupancy load in the parking garages. That'd be the only way we could do that. And we don't, we don't do that. So if there's twenty parking spaces available in a building, we take twenty reservation, we take twenty-two reservations and fill twenty of them. Or fill eighteen of them, whatever the, you know, however that math works out. But, um, no, we do not, we do not book windows of, you can come at eight, you have to be gone at noon, and you can come at one, and you have to be gone at five. That's not the way it works. It's one space per day.
Hey, can I ask Kulik a question? He looks like he's dozing off.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Chris, when, um, when we do traffic studies or CDOT does traffic studies or whatever. To determine the capacity of a given road. In, in, with, with a, with a fractional ownership or a timeshare, whatever. Did they, how do they look at that? Do they look at, like, just say, we'll use a 78 car average. Do they look at it, you know, over the course of the year? Or do they look at the impact over the course of the 30, 40 days that we have maxed out in the winter? Probably 30 days it would max out in the winter.
Yeah, I, I see Shannon Smith is on the call and I may dodge this question and see if I can pull her into it. Because I think she's kind of a resident, uh, traffic study person.
I think she's hiding of issues.
Um, generally, Jeffrey, they look at one peak day, you analyze traffic for a peak condition. And we typically say a peak condition is a weekend in February.
Okay.
So the traffic study will look at that point in time.
So they look at capacity on the, one of the busiest days of the year to see if, if it's okay.
And generally you study like current conditions in a five-year window and then you study out 25 years as well. So you add in growth factors of what it's going to look like 25 years from now.
Okay.
Uh, answer your question?
Yes. Hey, Shannon. When they're looking at these properties, when they're doing those studies, do, do they distinguish between a fractional ownership? In a condo complex or a hotel, how, how, how is that classified, a fractional ownership?
Sure, um, there's a manual that traffic engineers use, it's called the I T E, I, I don't know the full name of it. And there's trip generator rates assigned to different types of development, grocery store, hotel, you know. Apartment building, single family. And I think when we, I would have to look, they probably use hotel. I don't think it's a fractional ownership in the I T E, but I could double check for you.
That's my understanding as well, because I remember having this question when we were looking at the, um. That, you know, the admin property up at the ski area. You know, and, you know, those occupancies are quite different and hotels don't have the day use factor. So I, you know, I, you know, there's a little different in impact there.
So would your gut feeling to be that in a fractional development? A car, there'd be more trips per room than in a traditional hotel, is that what you're saying?
Well, it just, the occupancy is different, so on an annual basis, yes. You know, our, I think our units, I think occupancy in town is 60% at the highest. And, and, you know, in fact, fractional is 88. You know, that's gonna, on an annual basis per room, there's, there's going to be, and then you add the, the day use. It could be close to 100 if they're filling all those extra spots. So, you know, there's a, you know, yes, there's a difference in my mind, I just want.
Well, I mean, you know, in fairness, I mean, and that's, that February weekend, Beaver Run's full too. I mean, we're all full and on those peak traffic days. And, and I, I totally and completely agree with you, Dick, that in May, we're, we're our, we're, we, our occupancy. Drives more people in the community during the shoulder seasons, that's true. But we only have so many rooms to fill and we're full when you would think we'd be full, just like everybody else is full when you think maybe. You know, the town on average is 60%, we're on average 88. Doesn't mean we have 150% in February, obviously.
Okay, other questions?
I have a question for maybe Chris and Mike. Um, so on, under definitions in our packet on page two of this section. Um, it says new deeded ownership interest in properties with a timeshare system projects must include. A covenant that requires a managed service, um, reservation system for day use of amenity spaces. That the use must be limited to the number of vacant rooms in a particular day and cannot have a separate charge. So that's different than what's happening right now, because it sounds like it's, right now, Mike, your properties are tied to. Parking.
Yeah. Correct.
So that would be different, that, that, that is a proposed change moving forward.
Yeah, I think when we wrote that definition, because we have the order of, of events, was we first met with the task force. Which, you know, the two council members and then representative from BGV and then Jack Wolf. And so the suggestion was not to include interval and fractional within the definition. So from that, Mark Trucking and I, essentially the ones that drafted most of the definitions, other recommendations based on that. We took this definition based on that information of understanding there was a. Reservation system where now we know there's a lot more detail than what we had from the meetings we had from the task force. It wasn't, um, we didn't spend nearly the time that I think that you have had and we've had with them since then. So that's how we understood it was from, from the rooms. Presented that to the planning commission, they, they supported it, now we're here with that definition. You know, essentially, we're trying to narrow down to what the best definition is. And, you know, take your feedback and, and move forward. So I'm not sure that we're necessarily tied to that specific definition. I think that was our attempt to try and codify both where we thought it was important to have a covenant. So would, we'd have some teeth going forward and then we had some kind of mechanism that controlled the amount of people going to the property. And that's, that's how we got to that definition.
Okay, and is that one, is that one pass per one room? So is that one person per room or is that occupancy of the room? Was there any conversation about that?
There really wasn't occupancy, I think before we had proposed maybe. And this was a carryover, I think, when we were trying to define the many the club on the fly during East Peak Eight Hotel. But we were trying to define like what is, you know, one membership, how many people would that entail? What's the average family size? I think that, you know, from the feedback we got from both Jack and Graham was, you know, there are some people that will buy, you would use it. And maybe one person drives up there to go skiing, there's someone else that may have eight people in their family and they're bringing the suburban. And they're going up there, but kind of the law of averages for having that one parking pass. Will play out, we'll probably be in that neighborhood of, you know, four or five people was our understanding.
So it would be one car per unit then, in that case. Because, because the thing is, I mean, I know some of these hotel rooms or what, or sorry, timeshare rooms can hold a lot of people, more so than what's in a car. So it could be, right, because this, if, this is not tied to parking, it's tied to a room, right?
No.
Yeah, and I would say we're, you know, I think anything within this definition, we're, we're open to suggestions, so.
To change, okay.
I think it was just a attempt to, to try and codify some sort of mechanism to control the flow of people for membership. So you don't run the situation that Mike had where he had an LLC that buys the unit and, yeah, 50 people have right to it every day.
Right.
Okay. Or any other questions for Mike right now?
Eric, real quick, in a, in a two-bedroom, there's eight, there's eight beds in a two-bedroom, Aaron. A sleeper sofa and two beds and typically on average, it's 2.3 people per key that we have. So a two-bedroom unit is going to be on average 4.6 people sleeping in the unit, not 12, not eight, 4.6.
Great, thank you.
About the way I party.
Any other questions?
I want to see that video.
Anybody, anybody, last call. All right, Mike, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I got a, I got a correct question for Chris or Shannon or whatever. Okay, so what we're trying to do, we're trying to determine if we think timeshare of, of, what? Is it timeshare or fractional ownership? What's the terminology?
I took, you know, that's a good question, Jeffrey, because they're different things. What, what exactly do they build up there?
As I understand it, it's, it's a fractional where it's a deeded property versus some of the other timeshare systems. You're buying points that you can transfer from different properties or within the same network. So I think they're a little bit different, but I think in terms of how we probably look at operationally, how they function, they're, they're somewhat similar.
So fractional, isn't that just finance, real estate?
Fractional is deeded ownership, where timeshare, you're just buying, I think, the, the opportunity to use the room.
Okay, but my question is, so that's what we're trying to figure out, I'm going to call it fractional, timeshare. We're trying to decide if we would lump timeshare in with amenity clubs. And the, the timeshare user use, day use, uh, component with amenity clubs. If we do that, would that make it impossible for a company to come in and do timeshare? Or would it just make it, uh, timeshare with a, with a, uh, day use component? Or would it just make it more difficult?
It would mean that you'd have to pay for things like, not, and when I say pay, I mean.
Provide?
Do any, you'd have to provide parking, you'd have to provide, um, you know, it would become commercial density for those amenity spaces potentially. So those are, those are pretty big things there that we have traditionally, I guess, not really done. Um, and I know Mike was saying he parks at one per. I'm pretty sure we were parking some of those products at point 88 was the way some of the traffic studies had come up before. I can't remember exactly with Peak Eight, but, you know, I'm pretty sure that some of the other ones were parked at point 88. So you would then come up with a different parking configuration, they would potentially have more parking. And then you would have to pay commercial density for that amenity space because it's theoretically, as an amenity, is, is worth more. Yes, I think there, I mean, I think the simple answer, Jeffrey, is. It, it would be, I guess it's possible, I mean, there's obviously their cost and their pro forma of how they're constructing it. But to get the, get the space of its, determine that it's commercial density, they would have to use, you know. Use square footage, it would go to something else. I mean, I think one thing that's probably worth noting is look at each property in terms of how much amenity space. They can have or entitled to is a little bit different. You may recall on the Peak Seven and Eight Master Plan, we gave a really generous bonus in terms of how big they could build those amenity areas. Because at the time, we thought that was something we wanted to encourage was then to push, you know, have more amenities on site. Since then, we've restructured the code where actually our many bonus is much smaller than what they could have if you're building up at, at Peak Seven and Peak Eight. So to, for someone that's coming in and developing another area of town, they may have to use some of their density anyway. To make their amenities larger if they want more amenities on, on site. So there, not every area in town, depending on the master plan or the, um, just the land use guidelines and everything. Is exactly the same in that regard for, for a baseline.
So can you tell me, and I probably should have asked this before, but. What are some places that are not timeshares that have amenities? So we can compare whether timeshares are different than amenity clubs?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the, a trend overall, you know, if you probably look at going back to. Residential development in the 80s where we had stuff along four o'clock run or over adjacent to, um, the Peak Nine base area. They probably had more minimal amenities, they had a couple of hot tubs, some of the larger ones, they might have had a pool for a, of entire. HOA, like the upper and lower Four Seasons pools that are kind of on either side of the base of, of Peak Nine. But I think at, if you look at this development, really anywhere, I think the amenities have just gotten more elaborate. Because that's kind of what's drawing people in. I think, you know, particularly, uh, probably speaking for myself, you know, traveling with kids, you want, you know, nice pools and things that are interesting. And then, um, you know, I think BGV did kind of raise the bar, putting in theaters and other things like that. So I think it's just, it's just the evolution of development that's, um, that we're, we've seen. You know, some of the other properties like Welk, you know, same thing, they have a more elaborate pool complex and have a nice gym and.
Which places in town are amenity clubs, have amenity clubs that are charged for?
Oh, Chris, hold on a minute, because you're not, you're not getting to Kelly's question. Do we have true amenity clubs that currently exist in Brack? I'm not sure we do, because.
We, we do. The Gravity House is, is, is that, where, and, and how we treated the Gravity House, because they are selling memberships and. You know, we treated that as 100% commercial for what they were doing with their gyms and everything. Made sure that they parked it per the Village Master Plan, which is a much reduced rate compared to what we have in the code. But they still, that's what they had to meet. And so they, the, the key things were, since they were selling memberships and it was a commercial enterprise. It was treated as commercial space and they had to park it accordingly. It, in a lot of ways, it's, it's similar, if you wanted to go out and build like, uh, uh, you know, your private rec center or a health club. That would be, you know, not unsimilar to a amenity club where you're charging people to use recreational facilities. And so you'd have to meet, meet the standards. We previously had those, those, I mean, I think because of how nice our rec center is, those probably aren't financially viable anymore. But it, you know, prior, there were a couple of those sprinkled throughout town.
Kelly, the, the danger is that older established places like where Gravity House is now. Can start to do these kinds of things, that's one of the things we want to, that was an impetus for this amenity club thing. That and the Peak Eight thing and the, the amount of traffic to it. What you can't have is an, an older resort start to transition to these kinds of things. Because the intensity of use gets to be much greater than what is traditionally allowed and, and what you can. You know, Gravity House got through because we didn't think about this and we didn't have any rules in place. So that one's done, but we can't allow that again. You have to, you have to pay commercially for that usage because you're inviting people that are not staying there to come up and use that, that thing. Now, the question before us today is, how does Gravity House and the, the resort that they were going to? I don't even know what's going on with the Peak Eight one that Mike started and, and.
The Peak Eight Hotel, you mean?
The, yeah. How are those similar or dissimilar to?
Right.
Any, any other timeshare fractional ownership, anything else? And should they be held to the same standard of things like parking and commercial density that needs to go into those amenities?
I think they're kind of in the middle of a whole ownership and like a situation like that, what they were proposing at East Peak Eight. Where they wanted to sell a bunch of memberships. You know, they, if it was up to them, they probably would have sold 200 memberships. And, and someone who owns a whole ownership condo rents it out as a, a short-term rental, but lives in town and still uses it to go parking. Or uses the parking to go skiing and then uses the hot tubs when they, they want, you know, if they don't have those at their primary residence. The difference is obviously with a whole ownership, there's only one owner that owns it, you know, all the weeks of the year. With a fractional, you have that multiplied, you know, out quite a bit. We, we talked to Tim Berry originally about, you know, because you even restrict, you know, owner from going to their condominium. And it, it sounded like you really can't restrict that. But with, with a timeshare or fractional, it, it's harder that, I don't think you can make the argument. You're really restricting the owner from, from going there, but it's, it's somewhere in the middle. Versus having, having overnight guests completely separate from the day use guest that has no connection to that property otherwise.
So do timeshare and fractional ownerships, do they need a different ratio in the development code for parking? Use density amenities, et cetera?
Well, that's what we proposed last time and, uh, you know, in the attachment and it seemed to get consensus and a lot of that was based on. You know, like the parking ratio, you know, was suggested from, that's what the town of Vale uses. You know, the, the density, we just did it, it's a straight commercial, you know, density. It's a, a one SFP equals 1,000, you know, it's, it's not unlike if you want to open a ski shop or you want to open a restaurant. Or opens a lot of things that actually have, you know, draw a lot of people in and have impact. We thought, we don't, we don't have different multipliers for commercial uses. This seems like it's kind of right in the middle of our typical commercial use. You know, there's water piffs that already set up for kind of health clubs and things like that, we recommended using them. And that, that's kind of what we have outlined in, in the attachment of how to address those questions for the one specifically. If you're, you know, looking to have an amenity club. We also think that because they would be clustered. you know, looking to um having the many club. We also think that because they would be clustered probably in closer to base areas where there maybe is a little bit more traffic that a traffic study is required where we wouldn't have a traffic study, you know, necessarily required for other commercial uses and that would, you know, just be a higher level of review. You know, above just coming in and saying you're proposing a new you know, restaurant, retail establishment, other things that that are also commercial.
And it's one of the other things that happened was for a while we were giving a real bonus on amenity space that didn't have to be paid for with density. Because we were sort of told this is, you know, this is how you attract people to these properties. We did not know, at least I will speak for myself, I did not understand at the time that that would drive business from that wasn't staying there for the evening. Had I known that, I don't think I would have been very supportive of that six hundred percent increase in amenity space. I just assumed it was for the people that were staying there for the night, not for the people that were going to drive up from Denver. And you know, whatever the number is seventy eight cars a day, I I I am shocked that um they have seven hundred twenty seven thousand owners for seven hundred rooms. That that's a stunning number to me. Um.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying, Eric.
Yeah, Aaron.
So I don't mean somebody to waters, but what is but there's a point, I swear. Um, what about for spa? Is it is it treated currently like commercial? Because that's another com- component.
What does their spa? You know, here's an interesting thing about that for a while. And I know this is fallen fallen away. When I said on planning commission, we really tried to make a point that if you had a spy in one of these places, you could not advertise in town because we felt at the time that was sort of an an antithesis to what they were trying to do. Look, we're gonna build a spa on site. Well, it should only be on site, then you shouldn't compete with spas in town. That that is I mean, I don't think we've ever enforced any of that. I know there was a huge fight. I barely recall some of this stuff, but you know, I mean, this is probably fifteen years ago that you know, you're getting a spy at whatever the the rate is and you're gonna go ahead and compete with people on that are paying Main Street prices and so that was considered at one point, but we don't consider that now.
So it's not considered commercial?
I well, it is.
It is considered commercial. I I remember, I mean, this is probably a little bit after Eric being, I was probably at the tail end of Eric being on plan commissioner, maybe just after he got off, but when we're starting to have buildings, you know, review that peak seven and PK. I remember specifically there is, I think, because of that the historical context, the conversation with Randy May about a proposed spa and I don't know if it was in Crystal Peak or One Ski Place, but very specifically saying that this is not amenity, this is commercial space that counts from the commercial, the limited amount of commercial SFEs up there. So that was definitely a a battle, you know, in that era.
You know, now that you say that, Chris, I think that is where that that argument came from is that this is not commercial space. We're not going to pay for it with commercial SFE. So our position was then you cannot advertise it, but that's almost impossible, Aaron, to enforce. So I don't think you can ever look at anything like that. If you do build a spa, if you know, I mean, that's that's another whole discussion.
Yeah, well, it's just because I know some of that area, right? Like with um with some places, you can use some of the amenities as part of going to the spa. So that's.
Right.
Um, it's part it's part of the conversation.
Right.
Is there any possibility, Chris, that we could have different planning and zoning for different areas, like an outlying area like the wealth property uh might have a a a little tighter tighter teeth, bit more teeth than say the Gravity House, which is, you know, right in the core, uh or are they all under the same guidelines?
I mean, I I think that's.
I know they are currently, but.
I mean, I think I think there's different ways you can you can handle it. There's areas that you'd want to disincentivize them. You could write it into the into the logs, you know, you can modify and say um specifically amenity club is kind of a recommended use or not a recommended use. And then that would be more under um earning pop, you know, not positive points, but earning negative points if it's not a recommended use under a land use guidelines as a deterrent. Or you could just go and say, um, I don't know, we actually outlaw any it's it it seems like we don't typically outlaw uses per se within the land use guidelines. It's more of just the um the relative policy, but I guess there's you could potentially outlaw them. I think like we've done that for drive-throughs for, you know, instance in certain land use districts where we say it's just prohibited.
I'm not talking about outlawing. I'm just saying more parking requirements like, you know, that yeah, that like say like a outlying property has has uh, you know, the the ability uh to, you know, to park more and.
I I think anything's possible, but it seems like typically we don't. I mean, we we basically have our parking standards for either within uh the the parking district, which is essentially the like the commercial part of the historic district and then outside the district.
Okay.
So you could potentially do that. We don't, we don't typically break it down further outside that unless we have you know, reduced parking in the master plan or, you know, something like that.
Jeffrey, I think just by first of all, changing land use district guidelines is very difficult. That is not as easy as just passing an ordinance like this where you would say for amenity club, you need an additional parking space of X multiplier. That that pretty much that pretty much takes out anything that's already built. So for instance, if if um you know, the residents in one day wants to add an amenity club, they're already let too lightly parked to begin with. And if you said you had to add spaces to make that an amenity club, they'd never pass muster, so they could never do it. So I think by doing something like this, you take out everything that's previously been built in the core because nothing is parked enough to begin with.
I get you.
So I.
With this, oh, sorry. What if they decided to be fractional ownership?
Um, tha- that's why we're talking about this. So yes, I mean.
But they would have to, because I guess to to bring it back. So if we were to not, if we were to exclude fractional ownership or or I'm sorry, no, if we were to change it, if we were to include fractional ownership, all of the the fractional ownership right now would be grandfathered in, correct?
Correct.
But if the Marriott decided to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
As I say, because because we didn't have any regulations, essentially it's all grandfathered in. You know, anyway, it would be just like projects going forward that are applying applying for this. I mean, I think one thing to think about about this kind of Eric's point is the number of existing ones is probably fairly limited in terms of convert converting. I mean, if you're big enough like a Beaver Run or the Village, you could probably get rid of some use that you have if you'd prefer to have an amenity club and then use that density, use that parking from that. If they got rid of a restaurant or something like that, they could make it probably happen for um a limited amount of space and projects that are that big or you know, maybe um a very small one at some of the whole ownership condos where maybe they have a little extra amenity space, but they wouldn't be able to do anything um sizable. But I think in to answer your question about converting to fractional or timeshare. I mean, you would have to get like a a whole condominium complex, it's whole ownership to have all their owners decide to sell and convert that, which would be pretty complex.
But Aaron is right about the Marriott. Marriott is is owned by one outfit. They could do that, Aaron. You're that's an excellent point that they could sell to somebody that would convert that to fractional ownership. And then under the if you leave fractional or timeshare out of this regulation, they could come in and create an amenity club. And they are tragically under parked there. So theoretically, yes.
And so so I guess the choice is we either include it, we either include fractional ownership or we exclude fractional ownership. If we include it, then we could, we could also manage it by tightening up. And I I don't mean, I don't mean to insult the language right now, but we we could tight tighten up or um, you know, make it very, we could make it as narrow as we want. I mean, if it's per unit or if it's per, you know, one day pass per family, I I don't know, like I I would say that we would probably want to um make sure those details are pretty clear and and a little less vague per per unit.
You need to drop back and and think what what's the problem that we're trying to solve or what's the problem we're trying to avoid? So we're trying to avoid traffic impact. We know that, right? That's that's that was one of the big ones in the pick PK property was that traffic going up Ski Hill Road. That's a big deal. You know, what what are the other things that we want to make sure? You know, we're we're not doing and what what revolves around that traffic impact is that things like ski lockers and you know.
Yeah, I just think it's intensity of use. Uh that's the question is like, is there an intensity? Uh is there an increased intensity of use from amenity clubs? And is there any difference in that intensity of use from fractional ownership? And I just like for the life of me, although I have tried, I cannot figure out how it would be any different because the if I mean, we're saying right here that average in town is sixty percent and up, you know, at on PK, they're looking at eighty eight percent. So I mean, fractional ownership, just the nature of the beast is that it's more intensely used because the whole point is to have people in there every week. And if you're not using it, you give it away to someone who or you sell it to someone who is. So I mean, we're looking at the intensity of parking, traffic circulation. There's just, there's not a difference that we that would warrant excluding it.
And Kelly, you know, there's if there is a difference, it's maybe more impactful, you know, and it you know, it there, you know, as Mike said, you know, they're gonna fill to a hundred percent. Well, the other, I mean condos and hotels don't, it's so rare that they get to a hundred percent, you know? You know, theoretically during peak season, when you know, our traffic and you know, problems are the highest. You know, the 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 fractional is going to get it. The other issue is we as a community are working so hard to try to get people out of their cars. It's with one of our core guys that came from our planning is you know, less cars, less, you know, more boots and less cars, you know, and and uh so if we're successful, we're gonna invite more day use, you know? So if if you know, if you know, if the fractional ownership with day uses you know, is uh, you know, they're at say ninety percent occupancy one night and they're super successful and they they they're able to have, you know, only sixty percent of those people brought cars. So they you know, they've got forty percent of those parking bikes open. They're they're gonna fill them with day use if if the. So so.
Sorry.
Backwoods in that, so.
But sorry to interrupt, but this but how this is written, it's it's linked to the open rooms, not to parking. So it shouldn't matter what the park and we can write that, right? We can write that per room, not per parking. My concern is, and I and and I don't know where this goes, but but a thought is if we do include this and they pay for it, then instead of us being able to limit how many day use passes there are per room that's available, then then it's limitless, right? Then there isn't a limit, right? If they pay for that commercial space and and they they're all in because that's part of their structure because they're fractional ownership and that's what they do. Well, then Dick, I think they they could be incentivized to have as much day use as possible. And that would be concerning to me too, that instead of, you know, one per room per day or whatever, whatever we decide, then it could be, well, per hour, per parking spot or whatever, you know, like they then they have the rules that they that they could write. So that's that's something that I'm I I I think our values or our goals are the same. I just worry about if we don't put parameters on this, what that would look like.
You know. Level the playing field and not exclude anyone, you know, particularly one that's got a higher occupancy and already, you know, arguably has higher um higher impact, so.
To Nick's point, one of the things that a developer will always tell you, anybody is that their intensity of parking use is never at what the code says. Every parking, every parking consultant that's come in, every track fit consultant has sought to prove to us that most people are going to come up on a shuttle. So if you tie this use to a parking space, all you're doing is chasing that hundred percent use. If they're telling you we really only need sixty percent, but we're willing to offer eighty eight percent of the parking that you think we should have. And we make them do a hundred percent and they're really bringing, you know, forty percent of the people up. We're gonna tell them you can have sixty more percent of the people come up in their car and use those parking space. That's why I like the room model better than the parking.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Eric?
Yeah.
Um, we've got to be careful, I think, about criticizing people for using their property to the full extent that we approved it for.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, fair enough, Tim. And you know, we're this is for me, this isn't directed at any individuals. This. No, I I and I I'm not saying that. I just I you know, I I just got from a legal perspective, I we should avoid criticizing or uh, you know, trying to to complain about something that we approved. Sure. And for me, this is the code evolving. So I'm talking more in in what we're trying to accomplish today. Just just, you know, we're learning from the past. We're not criticizing, we're learning. Got it. Yeah, still. Got it. Loves and I mean, honestly, you know, Mike, who was just on is one of our best operators and he's, you know, they're they're a good company. They you know, they give tremendously to the community and and that's that's very much appreciated. You know, however, you know, it's our job to to mitigate these impacts on our community and uh going forward. So that's what I think we're trying to do. And for me, the way to do it is to equal the playing field and and you know, Aaron and Eric, I'm fine doing it per room or you know, per membership per room, you know, the the mechanics of it are going to be difficult, but conceptually um the exemption clause and what's been presented to us, I haven't heard anything that is compelling me to to um agree with that. I I I'm still where I was in October feeling like um that fractional ownership or timeshare needs to be included in this in this, you know, um code change and uh you know, how we do it, you know, we we may need to vet a little further, but um, you know, I think the question staff's asking us is do we agree with exempting or not? And I do not agree with exempting.
Carol, you have not said anything.
Yeah, I had a question just, and this is something uh Dennis I and I were chatting, but how does this ordinance apply if it's a standalone amenity club, if it's not tied to a place with rooms? How does that apply or would that not apply?
Well, if you had a standalone amenity with no rooms, that would be just a commercial operation. And you would probably just fall under whatever commercial regulations there were on our code. You would have to have, you know, parking per commercial, you'd be at a thousand square feet per SFE you you know, that would fall into the code a little different. It maybe would be under a rec center or, you know, something like that. So I think that's already sort of predicated in our code. Tim, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I I I think that's just a commercial use, standalone commercial use.
What what we have with an amenity club, Carol, is a residential component that's that has a use that's vaguely commercial that's going to tack on a use that is more commercial and inviting people to use part of that vaguely commercial piece almost as a commercial operation. That that's where I think the struggle really, really is. And for the true amenity club like Gravity House, for instance, that's a pay by day or a pay by membership situation. So that makes it a little easier for us to say, that's obviously an amenity club. You have to pay to go and use the lockers and everything. You don't get to stay in a room. The timeshare is a little different. It starts to get to what Kelly was driving at that even though they're not paying by day, her belief is you're paying anyway because of the HOA fee, whether you use it or not. There's a, you know, fine line distinction there, I think, that that Kelly was trying to to make. So how do you how do you feel about including and then the? And then the staff will go off and 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 work through this. We're just gonna give them guidance, whether you believe it should have some some part of this amenity club ordinance.
Okay, got it. If we look at the, I mean, how the memo starts on mitigating we're managing the impacts on parking, employee housing, traffic capacity, external circulation, I think absolutely there's added impacts from time share, from um, fractional ownership. Um, and it's not associated with an overnight stay. Um, going back to the definitions, there's a handful of components listed, lockers, access aquatic facilities. It sounds like fractured ownership timeshare meets some, if not the majority of those. So another reason that I feel it should be included in the definition.
Dennis?
And I'm with Dick. I I do believe that that both should be included in the code changes.
Aaron?
I think they should be um, exempted, but with a with a more narrow vacancy or, you know, room vacancy connection. So first, maybe, you know, one day pass per unit, that sort of thing. And and the reason for that is because I do think that gets to our goals with with ultimately with fewer um, with fewer cars and fewer fewer traffic, that sort of thing. Because we are able to limit it and it would be confining fractioner fractional ownership to a more to closer to a more traditional hotel model and but we would be able to to make sure that's what it looks like, or they could go the amenity club route and pay for or not just pay, but yeah, be treated more like a commercial. So that would be having that having them more organizationally like a hotel than an amenity club. So that's that's the route that I would like to go.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, right now I'm I'm with the the bulk of the council. Um, I don't think it should be excluded uh, in in the in the whole over umbrella of uh, amenity clubs with Kelly and Dick and whatnot.
You know, I I agree, but I don't think it should be to the full extent of what we look at for amenity clubs in some of these other situations, like a hotel. I do, you know, I feel like the parking piece is a is an Achilles heel of what we're talking about. So if you would tell a developer who's gonna do time share or fractional that they have to park it more, you're gonna open up the door to inviting more people to come and park there if parking is your link on what they're allowed to utilize it for. If you do it linked on rooms, that's a different story. And then why have a parking piece in there to begin with? So, I think there is a place for amenity clubs in fractional slash time share ownership in this code language, but not to the full extent that we would use it in a hotel setting.
So you asking the staff to come back with a a third category?
Well, just a category within within that. I mean, we do that all the time. We have carve outs for you know, for different things between historic district and, you know, outside the historic district. So we would have we would have an amenity club definition, amenity club definition for hotel full ownership, amenity club definition for fractional ownership. Unless you could figure out a way to tie them all together, why we want to overpark anything. I think parking is a good limiter on these things. And how many people you can allow to utilize them is a goo- a good way to limit that intensity of use, getting to what Kelly is saying is is the problem, is intensity of use. A good way to limit that is with the parking piece. Chris and Mark, does that give you? Yeah.
Are you saying different ratios then?
Possibly. I mean, we do that in all kinds of situations.
I mean, it sounds like Aaron and Eric are kind of in favor of that. There's a lot of similarities in their comments, different ratios. Is there I guess, anyone else that just wants us to exclude it and go the other way that I guess is interested in you know, just trying to conform consensus one way or the other, um, exploring like Eric or Aaron's suggestion.
I I don't want it excluded. I want to come to a fair resolution. So I I'm open to I mean, in my mind, I haven't heard anybody say they want to exclude it. Well, maybe Aaron. But um, I don't want to exclude it. I want to include it. But if we want to carve out a a special provision of of the code that better fits that use, I'm okay. I I'm willing to look at that, but I I don't want it excluded.
Yeah, I guess.
So you're saying that they would?
Sorry.
Oh, I was just clarifying. So so they would be, so fractional ownership would be considered an amenity club, but they would be, say, treating a smaller portion of that amenity as commercial? Then say, you know, amenity club, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and and it's fractional ownership that includes they use. I mean, that's the that's the real piece.
Right, right.
Because you're fractional doesn't mean you're a club. It's the they use piece.
Yeah.
But that increases the impacts. So, yeah, they're they they are an amenity club if they allow day use in my mind. So that's a yes. We're not excluding. However, if we want to do a carve out like Eric was saying and have a have a little different formula for for mitigating the impacts for 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 that type use, I I'm willing to look at it.
And I guess the one question I had, Eric, was in your kind of like carving it out or having it reduced, are you wanting to count it as commercial density or not count it and just have reduced parking to mitigate the impact? That that's one thing I wasn't clear on.
I mean,
And just to
I think there has to be some commercial density that pays for some of this stuff. I, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna use that, I mean, while you might not be charging it it's still a selling tool. It's still a it's still something that you are selling as, you know, as a as a perk for being part of this. It's not it's not people saying, I would like to buy X. Oh, by the way, this all goes with it. It's more to your point, Chris, on what you look for when you go on vacation. That is the allure of buying a property that has this kind of function to it. So there has to be some commercial to it. I just don't know how to, I don't know how we would.
Well, uh, Eric, maybe we could throw some, I mean, I think I'm getting the gist of what you're saying. And what I'm hearing here is that we look at, I mean, it's included as part of the definition, but it's carved out in its own definition to, because it may not require the additional parking because the amount of the day use is gonna be limited by certain factors, whether that's either number of parking spaces or rooms, we can decide on that. But because it is somewhat more restrictive than a trad- more of a traditional amenity club, which is selling those true memberships add-ons for it's a for-profit venture like that, uh, maybe there's a different formula we use on how much commercial what's considered commercial space and a density has to be used in it versus uh, the other one. So I mean, we can take a stab at what we think might be fair and then you look at it, you guys can then tweak parts of it.
I think Mike I I think Mike gave some great uh, ideas of what they're doing to limit use right now. I mean, I think what some of the stuff he talked about um, we could use. Kelly, sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say, I would only support something that carved out the cut, carved it out in a very conservative way because I would really venture to say that this amenity space is some of the most utilized commercial space in our entire town. So I just, you know, it's used longer hours, it's used more days, it's used in the shoulder seasons because of fractional ownership. That's you know, it's always been very good to us and it's really created some benefits to our town and and um, you know, certainly those shoulder season, that shoulder season use has helped us, but it's also something that um, results in a lot of commercial use. And so I don't think it's I don't think there's much of a reason to carve it out as as less of an impact.
Yeah. And, yeah, and you know, I agree, Kelly. That's to my point of the evolution of the code, the evolution of our town. I mean, we used to incent all kinds of development years ago. So, you know, we're not doing that anymore. And I think it it this is a similar situation. One last comment, I I uh, I do see it as as it's purchased. I think they monetized that amenity space by, uh, you know, I think this is a huge perk in there for their sales team. And um, you know, I I think when you purchase a a fractional ownership a week, you also purchase what I view to be this membership in this club. I mean, the will articulate it differently than Mike might, but that's how I see it personally. I you are purchasing two things. You're purchasing your week and you're purchas- purchasing your membership. And so it's not that unlike a a regular amenity club. But since you're getting two things, then then it it might warrant some some different um, ratios and formulas. So I'm I'm again, I'm comfortable with what we've already talked about.
Eric, if I could, um, I think Chris and I have got enough uh, feedback from the council. We can come back with several alternatives and how to treat the time shares, like you said, some type of ratio perhaps. I mean, frankly, some of that we were trying to get to with East PK Hotel, but those numbers just didn't work. Um, and I understand um, where the council came from on that, but we can certainly provide you several options to take a look at this. And um, you know, in more detail, and I think, you know, you got some choices and to move forward with.
What's it? How long is this? How long will that take, Mark? I thought we, I thought we'd have this, I thought we might resolve this tonight. I guess not. So how long?
Yeah, I I I think we need to come back to the next meeting, Jeffrey, with something. We do have a timeline. We're still working with the the moratorium ends the end of May.
Okay.
Um, so we're we're kind of trying to keep that in mind and keep this thing rolling along. So we definitely would, if we could find room, come back perhaps the next meeting or as soon as
Muted or every five, you could just say, we just want to, I don't think Aaron and I would, but five, you could say, we just want to add this straight to the definition that you've already created too.
And I I would say that, but I don't, I think there's some interest to to uh, maybe create a third category, but you know. Why don't you guys let us see what we can come up with?
I think that sounds like the plan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, let us uh, let's move on to the childcare community survey.
So before we jump into going through this survey, I want to see I know there were some conversations earlier today to see if there is a desire from the council to change our direction a little bit. I mean, when we look at the, obviously that, you know, there are a couple of factors that we're looking at that and childcare being the primary one is like some sustainable funding source on that. Uh, and we're using short-term rentals as a means, you know, taxing those what we consider non-exempt short-term rental properties uh, to provide that funding source. But, you know, Eric raised the question that he has a hard time making that nexus between uh, that childcare and the short-term rentals that we're taxing and that we it might be more appropriate for the town with with and we might have better success if we use um, that tax on the short-term rentals to help fund traffic. We, you know, we subsidize, I mean, traffic. We we subsidize transit through our excise um, revenues, uh, the majority of of transit. And uh, and you know, tho- those are monies that can't be used for other things because it's paying for transit. We're seeing those transit, transit has been going like this. When you look at our projection of of costs related to it, it's it's obviously the capital is extremely expensive for transit. The personnel costs are extremely uh, expensive because it, you know, there's, you have to have a body setting and every seat in there. And we continue to get uh, demands from areas as we expand and build more. And, you know, many of us read the comments from the Upper Waters Mark area that was predominantly um, short-term rental properties and how important it was to their short-term rental business that they had that transit service up there. And people even said, we're willing to help pay for it. And so maybe we, maybe it's better to, you know, to tie that that additional tax onto short, those non-exempt short-term rental properties to help fund. And if you did, you know, if you're looking at up to one percent and you're looking at a million and a half and it's that money's going towards transit, that is money that is freed up to allow you to use in other high need areas like childcare. And so you're accomplishing the same thing, but you're doing it, you know, in a way that might make more sense if the council agrees and might be uh, embraced by our community and it might be more easily understood in a uh, you know, in this polling type survey, we're going for one question. Uh, transit related uh, things to consider. And if you think if you think that you would support that, then what we would do is not sit here and debate this current survey. Uh, we would go back with our committee and meet with uh, Magellan and Mr. Flaherty and his group, and we would redesign our questions based on this new uh, kind of new direction that 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 we've decided to take. Eric, anything else on that?
No, I, you know, we talked earlier about doing childcare and transit. I have had a difficult time really creating the link in my own mind between the short-term rental and the childcare. I know there is a link. I I know that as as more people rent their properties and we get more people coming to town, that creates a need for more employees, that increase, you know, obviously a need for for more childcare. There there is a nexus there. I think it's a difficult one to argue though, and I have had a hard time in my own mind creating that argument. The argument with the transit piece, though, I think is very easy. We have seen a huge amount of emails to us asking for transit, not only in the Upper Warriors Mark area, but into the Highlands at the golf course, et cetera, et cetera, all, not all. Predominantly for the use of of guests through second um, through short-term rentals. So I think that's an easy argument to make that, look, we can't pay for everything. But if we can pay for something through a tax that supports transit to go with some of the money we get out of the Lyft ticket tax, we'd have enough to run a transit system and then we can take care of some of the other stuff that we have traditionally been taking care of anyway. I mean, don't forget, we have been paying for childcare as a town out of just general fund for years now. So um, that that's sort of where this came from. I, it's just arguments I have with myself.
But isn't our goal to create a uh, a perpetual revenue stream for for uh, childcare and would this accomplish that?
We gotta create a perpetual revenue stream for almost everything we do. I mean, I I think at some point, if if we went down this road and we could take care of one piece, we could come back and pass a resolution that says that, you know, town council will contribute X amount annually to the childcare fund out of general fund.
And then you can't, but you can't commit future funds.
You can't, but if if we made a statement it would be hard for a future council, given the makeup of our community to go and just say, we're not supporting childcare anymore. So it's just a thought, I, you know, like I said, I'm having trouble drawing a straight line here. And I talked to a couple of you about this, about my concerns today, so.
So I just don't know the numbers on this. If we, if we take the, the funding that we're, we're currently putting toward transit and then add, add the new routes that are being requested of us, what is that? Do we have an idea of what that would look like and what, what those routes would be?
Well, for every, depending on the, the, uh, every route's going to cost you, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, just rough ballpark, when it, when you add a route in there. So, um, the, the numbers don't matter either way. It doesn't matter if the ballot question is specifically dedicated to childcare or if, if it's dedicated to anything else. What that becomes is a dedicated revenue stream into the town. When you have that dedicated revenue stream, while it has a specific purpose of what it's used for, it's freeing up other money that can then be repurposed and used elsewhere. So.
Sure, but I don't want to overextend ourselves by, by overpromising, like all the routes.
Well, yeah, you can't, we're not sitting there promising. We know that we're already getting requests for routes. Every year you debate, are you going to keep Upper Warriors Mark, which costs a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, right? We have that debate every year whether we're going to keep that right now. And, uh, so even if you don't add routes, you see it, there's a continuing climb on the cost of transit. What was a two and a half million dollar budget five years ago is a five million dollar budget today. Almost five million dollars. Not today because of COVID, but normally.
Last right now.
Would there be a way to, um, cause I think, just like Jeffrey said, and he put it well, it's like, what we want is this money or the, these funds in perpetuity. But even just not to have a year-to-year concern, like I feel like what we've done in the past and funded it, you know, for a five-year at a time so that people can plan on that and they can be assured. You know, could we still do that? Because I would prefer to not run it the way we run some things, which is like, you know, down to zero. And then we appropriate the funds again and it comes back up. I think that, I think that's very hard on a lot of families and directors and people.
You can feed, you could, it is a separate fund. And so you can feed the fund and that's what we did years ago. You could feed the fund $10 million right off the bat if that's what you wanted to do. And that tells you that that fund then is, you know, sustainable based on it, you know, for the next 14 years, based on that dollar amount that you've feeded it. That still doesn't preclude a future council taking that, but they're less likely to, right? And I think in some regard, I think they have to trust this town. This town has never, has always done well for childcare. You know, when Montessori was getting kicked out, we stepped in and bought the building. Um, we, you know, we're, we're doing the teacher supplemental salaries that have now become a yearly thing. Um, and so there is, nobody can point to a history where we haven't done that, I think. And I think there has to be some trust that that would continue on there. I think it boils down to what, what do you feel works the best? What do you feel has the best likelihood of success? You know, on the direction that you want to go.
The two choices, or, or, or two of the choices we're discussing is whether we'd put on the ballot, uh, uh, some sort of time share, um, in a tax, impact tax. Pardon me?
Short-term rental.
Be a, a short-term rental that would go to, uh, that would go to fund childcare. That was, that was one choice. The other choice would be put some sort of tax on a short-term to go to transit? What, what are we, what are we talking about here?
That's it. Well, we did, we did talk about bundling the first one to include childcare and transit.
Okay.
So.
Why don't we ask the, um, the polling group? I mean, why don't we can still do the polling, but let's ask them which, which question they like better? They, they like, you know, would they be supportive of a, of a tax on short-term rental customers for childcare or for transit? I mean, we need both.
Yeah, or we could say both.
The large part of the survey is that first step in understanding what the community supports, what, if they understand it, I think we're back at the drawing board a little bit in which issue are we prioritizing? We can, of course, play with our funding to make sure that childcare is well-funded and then make this be a transit question where transit, like Rick said, would then have a dedicated funding source that we can't put elsewhere.
Yeah, if we, and we should bring, can we bring David over and Ryan? Because, uh, hopefully they've been listening to this and they may have a, uh, a suggestion, but if we were going to, if we were going to ask those, uh, which they support, I think right now it's, the survey is barely, very heavily leaned towards childcare, right?
As we wait for those guys to come on, how many times has childcare been on the ballot?
Once.
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 Eight thirteen.
Thank you.
For just Breckenridge, that's, that was, there was one.
Specific.
Breck only.
Exactly.
That's the same.
But it was also a year where there was another question for childcare for the county.
Which passed.
Hi, David. Hi, Ryan. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. No.
No problem.
We've been listening to, uh, the discussion, uh, since it started on everything and, and we completely understand, uh, uh, some perhaps changes of, of heart on measuring this. Just first of all, let me tell you, of course we can measure both, uh, interests, um, but if the direction of the council and staff is, um, to do the short-term rental, uh, revenue tax, the accommodations tax, and just put it towards transit with telling the community that you, that'll be relatively single subject, but understand by doing that, that, you know, revenue being generated, the one-five will free up room in the general budget for us to continue the commitments and so forth. We would recommend having that information built into the survey so that respondents and the community are fully aware of that's the intent of the council. That's very important. Okay? And I just want to make sure and let you know that we have done that before. We did it in Avon, uh, I think it was maybe, or, um, or it was Eagle Vale, I think we did that where they wanted to free up money from their own budgets, uh, but there was dedicated money going to uh, only, uh, road and, uh, sort of transit sort of things. And so we've seen that sort of approach before. And, uh, the effort was successful in letting everybody know participating in that ballot measure that that's how the money would be used and that was the intent of that and it passed. So that, that's, we've seen that before. It's, it's, and, and we've seen it work. So, um,
David, what about if we just went in with a very open mind and just said, you know, should we use this tax to fund childcare? Or should we use this tax to fund, um, transit? Could we do something that's a little less?
Yes, we could.
Pre-decided?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, we definitely can. And we've done that before. Look, they both may be home runs, um, and, you know, but again, uh, how you want to structure it. But of course, Kelly, we can structure, uh, the questions and, uh, you know, we, we lead along respondents and folks so that they, most important thing is for them to understand as we're bringing them through the questions, uh, so that they get a clear direction of why we're asking, what we're asking, where we're going. And so that it's very open, it's very transparent and they understand no decisions have been made. Um, but we really would like to hear from you and your opinions on that, Kelly. So if, you know, we, we, we wanted to sort of ask the questions in a manner where no decisions have been made. You know, there's always that question, does one bring the other one along? Or, you know, if we want to do a dual subject sort of effort or, uh, you know, we, we can approach it however you want, Kelly is what I'm saying. We've done it that way before. Um, we just need to be repetitive, transparent and specific to respondents. That's really important.
Well, I think there's, you know, there's just a lot of good points that have been made in this whole discussion. And so I just don't think that probably any of us are in the position to say, no, let's go this other direction at this point. So I do like the idea of conducting the survey in a way that would inform our next step. And, you know, we're probably taking a smaller step than we had initially thought we were. But I think it, I think it's the right one. And I think that the childcare committee, um, you know, they, they're very realistic on this. Nobody has said this is a shoe-in, let's just go, let's go as soon as we can. So I would imagine that the childcare committee and Lori, you can certainly speak to this too, but I think they'd be supportive of this decision.
So if, so maybe what we, if the council agrees with what Kelly says, then we would regroup, our little committee would regroup with, uh, David and Ryan. And we would kind of then restructure the survey based on trying to get to that answer, which would you support? And then we would bring a draft back to you. I mean, we, we have a little time. We, we're not under a strict, uh, timeline here. So I think we can go back and kind of restructure this and bring it back. So does, does everybody think that's worth looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely think we should get community input, which way we decide to go.
All right. All right. So why don't, David, we'll, we'll get a meeting set up with our committee again and we'll, we'll hash this out, okay?
Sounds good, Rick. And just so people know for a timeline, we, we have plenty of room here, plenty of room. So, uh, no, no need to rush. Don't feel that, I just want to let you know, don't feel like it takes us weeks and weeks to put something like this together. So, um, thanks for the feedback, uh, and your thoughts, um, and giving us direction. And we look forward to the next working session with everyone. Okay?
Thanks, David. Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks all.
Thanks, Ryan.
Take care. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, uh, COVID's update. Big Rick.
Uh, my mind's a little fried here right now. Couple of things, I think they, uh, you know, the, the, they came out with a new executive order from the state, which had, and they changed some things on the dial. Nothing that's going to have a huge impact, I don't believe, on our operations. They mainly are going to impact probably restaurants, really large restaurants. So where the current operating in blue says 50% or 175 people, they increased that, I believe, to 225. What's, I don't think we have any restaurants, it's going to fall into, to, uh, to that category in town. Um, and they changed a couple of things on the yellow, but they were related to restaurants and some other stuff. Part of the most important thing is they gave clarity to how we would come out. So we are currently in, uh, level yellow, right? Five-star operates in blue. You know, we, when we were hovering in the mid-two hundreds and we know that you could, you know, one event like spring break could cause us to spike. And so what happens if we, and 300 is the bottom threshold for orange. So in order for us to be, to, to leave, uh, level yellow and be moved into orange, we would have to exceed 15% above, um, 300 for a period of five days. So one or two-day spike would not cause us to move, for us to be moved into, um, back to orange. So 15% of 300 would be what, 45? We'd have to be at 345 or greater for, uh, a five-day period in order for them to move us. Although Aspen, apparently in Picken County has been at like 500 forever and they still haven't gotten moved, but, uh, so.
Different rules, man, different rules.
But, uh, that was, uh, that was an important part to understand. They also really, I mean, the, uh, last call liquor stuff went to like 2:00 AM. So I could tell you in talking with the county right now, I think today, my guess was they were going to allow our five-star to go to 11:00 PM. They're not inclined to go much later than that, certainly during the month of March right now. But I, I will be shocked if they don't come back, uh, and tell us that you can go to 11:00 PM now if you're a five-star on, on liquor. So I think they heard that, they heard that message pretty clear from the committee that that's what they wanted to see was 11:00 PM. And so, uh, I'm guessing that's what it's going to be. Shannon, is there? Was there something else on that I was going to say?
I think there was one more thing, but I can't recall right now where it was.
Well, while you're thinking of what Rick was going to say, um, is that something that's like, i- i- is that something that's important to us? To allow a lot, uh, booze to be served later at night, more so than more flexibility in, in dining?
Well, you know, you're not going to give more flexibility in dining because the next thing would be to shorten up the six-foot.
Yeah, okay.
Happen. So the, the later, the later drinking is important for some of the finer dining restaurants. If you go in to eat at nine o'clock and you're going to eat for two hours and at 9:30, some dude's going to come over and take your cocktail from you. That's where this has been, you know, Dick and I have been sort of pushing this from that area, not from opening up, so, you know, you could go out at nine and get wasted until 11. It's really more for that, you know, sitting down and had, being able to enjoy what you've bought until you're done with it. You know, a bottle of wine takes a, a little while. So it has been really hampering that, um, fine dining component of the restaurants.
Yeah, and I think it helps all the dining, particularly now where we're getting ready to go into a really busy couple of weeks. We, we are able to, you know, the, the, the days are longer. So, you know, when it gets dark at 4:30, the whole dining experience is pushed early. But now it's staying light till almost seven and, you know, so the, the night starts later. And, and even at, say, Mikasa, we, we trend to be able to serve dinner, you know, later. So, and as Eric said, you know, a margarita with Mexican food is kind of important. They, 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 they frown upon it when you try to yank their margarita at the same time you serve their entree. So, so I, I think it helps all sectors at this point, uh, probably that fine dining a little more, but it really helps all sectors.
The problem for me, Jeffrey, is my staff likes going home early now and I don't know how I'm going to change that.
Yeah. I'm kind of part of the, your early, uh, early bird special demographics myself, so.
Yeah, you are. You do good in Florida.
Yeah.
Um, all right, that's about all we have. We have about, uh, eight minutes. I don't know how much you want to get into or do you want to give everybody a short break?
Let's take a break.
Yeah, you know what? This, this should be like government label laws. I need, I, I need a break.
Two, three, four. Where's Aaron?
She has a canned picture.
Jeffrey, you're in charge of her, you know that, right?
Uh, yeah, you know what? She's been really hard to handle lately. She's the newfound desiring autonomy. Here she is.
All right, I forgot my water downstairs. I'm here.
All right, I'm going to call to order the, uh, town council regular meeting for the ninth of March, 2021, and begin with a roll call, please, Helen.
It's Sade. Here. Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Ms. Giallo.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Helen. Uh, we have, uh, minutes from the 23rd of February, 2021. Anybody have any changes? Corrections, anything? Minutes and as presented. Uh, agenda, Rick, any change?
Other than let's, uh, yes, there is one. Add the, uh, appointment of the childcare community member under the business other.
Okay. All right, uh, communications. All right, uh, communications to council. These are non-agenda items and I'll give you 30 seconds if you're interested in telling us something. Of course, you're always welcome to, and it starts right now, by the way. Of course, you're always welcome to send us information at mayor@townofbreckenridge.com. And, uh, we do read every email. All of us do. And thank you to all of you who send. Emails on a consistent basis, especially the ones that talk about how wonderful Jeffrey is. Right?
Yeah, we've been, we'll run with those.
Yeah, we've gotten some great feedback on Walkable Maine. There's been just some great outreach. Um, so thank you, everybody for that. And that, uh, concludes, uh, the public comment period for now. If you have a comment about something that's actually on the agenda, you can start typing that now and we'll get to it when we get to that. Um, but today, as a special guest, John Bueller from the Breckenridge Ski Resort with an update. We haven't seen you for a while, John. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. It is good to see everybody. Jeffrey, I love the hairstyle.
Yeah, thanks. John and I have the same beauty consultant.
Gosh, you know, on Sunday, it'll be one year since we closed the resort. Pretty, pretty wild and it's been a year. And with that said, I guess I would say that we're really proud that we've been able to have a, and provide a safe and successful season this year. And look forward to continuing that through the end of the season. So as we move into spring break in our late spring season. Um, obviously we're a little challenged with snow right now. Um, but our goal is still to go through Memorial Weekend if possible. But we're going to need some help from Mother Nature to make that happen. But with all the challenges and impacts of COVID-19 that's presented us over the last year. Um, we definitely understand the benefits of creating, uh, recreation outside and are grateful that. All of you in the community and our guests have, uh, been excited to have us open and, um. You know, I think, uh, I think we've been able to do that. So the safety of our employees, our guests, the community continue to be our highest priority. And we're pleased with the state and the county authorities, um, have recognized that skiing. Does not present a significant transmit of COVID. And it's a low risk. So that's great. Uh, that said, obviously we remain vigilant with our safety efforts, including mask compliance and physical distancing. And really appreciate being in lockstep with, uh, the town of Breck in terms of mask compliance. So thank you for that. As we continue to enforce it as well. We are bolstering internal, external mask compliance communication efforts. You'll start to see that at the end of this week, moving into next week. Um, and that it has not changed. We are not lifting any mandates. Um, we are going to be as compliant as we have been all season with those rules and regulations. So thanks for that. We also understand that it looks busy at times around our base areas and our lift lines. Um, but I can assure you, there's a lot less people on the mountain than there have been in traditional years. We continue to focus on physical distancing in our lift lines and mazes. And again, that's why it looks busy. We've got ghost lanes, uh, keeping everybody six feet apart. And then we're also not loading our lifts at full capacity. So it, it, uh, certainly makes it look busier, but what you can see is when you're actually on the mountain. Uh, the density level is very different. So, um, it's really helping to spread out our guests, which we think is great. Um, and then, you know, what we've really been trying to do is make sure that at the end of the, the day, we get our guests back to town. And we're really trying to utilize the ski back, the gongless ski back and down four o'clock. Uh, really trying to advertise that heavily to help assist us get our guests back. So that's been great. We are open on all five peaks, but we are not completely open yet. We're about 93% open. Um, and we just opened up Imperial two weeks ago and the lazy seven to peak seven bowl just this last weekend. Um, so again, like I said, it's certainly been challenging, uh, but it looks like the snow is on the horizon again. Hopefully coming in, starting on Thursday. So pretty excited about that. On mountain dining, I think I heard you guys talking about this just a little bit earlier, the five star dining. Uh, we've been able to open up, uh, a little bit, uh, not to the level that we, you know, we can't max out. Um, but we are with six foot spacing between our tables. Um, and we're in the 150, 120, 550 seat range in our restaurants now. We still are using, uh, TALK, which is our time to dine app. Uh, that allows guests to, uh, make sure they have a reservation to sit down inside. Also, the last couple of weeks with the nice weather, we've certainly had a lot of people sitting outside, which has been fantastic. Um, and then, uh, tomorrow night, uh, we are going to, um. Host at six o'clock tomorrow night of live virtual event to talk about uphill access. We continue to see an increase in activity at this and to assist our, our community. We want to make sure that people are following designated routes. We've put up more signage and markers. And so anyone that's interested and wants to attend that, um, please look on our event link on our resort Facebook page. That's tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And I spoke about late spring operations, but as we continue to focus on those operations. We will also be adding a new lift this summer. The peak seven lift will be going in. Uh, so we will be operating off, out of peak eight. Uh, two years ago, when we operated late spring, we operated on peak seven and six. It's here to be on peak eight, T-bar Imperial and Colorado and Rocky Chair. Reservations will continue for late spring through April 18th. Uh, and then beyond that, we'll open up more dates. And then I guess, like I said, we're going to, um. I guess we're, we're pretty darn excited about that new lift coming in. As you can tell, we still, uh, are pretty darn busy at the base of peak seven. And with this new lift, the ability for guests to go to that lift once and then be able to disperse over to peak six and or back to peak eight is going to be incredible. So pretty excited about that. And we will be starting that in April. After April 18th, we will start work on that construction of that lift. So. That's kind of the update for us. And again, I just want to thank all of you for all of your efforts this entire year and keeping our community safe. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate what you guys have done too. Any questions for John?
Yeah, John, uh, how's that reservation system working? Do you see any value in that after this current, uh, circumstance that we're all dealing with? I mean, was, was that helping you with staffing? Could you ever see yourself doing that? Are you guys doing that down the road post-COVID?
Yeah, I think, I, I don't think we've had time to really think about that. We've just been in the midst of this season. But I think it's something that we will definitely review. I, I tell you, the top, uh, dining reservation system has worked really well for us as well.
John, what are you using? What's it called?
It's called TALK, T-O-C-K.
Okay.
And, uh, we've got, um, you know, we've got it plastered all over everywhere. So, um, really easy to use.
Cool. I'm gonna check it out. Any other questions for John?
John, good to see you.
Hi Dennis.
Tomorrow night, is that about options for the future? Or is that just talking about how your uphill program went this year?
It's talking about how the program went this year as well as making sure everybody understands how to utilize, you know, the hotline and things like that. I'm sure they'll take questions from the audience as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else, Gay? All right. John, thanks for being here. We really.
All right. Appreciate your support.
Have a great day, bud. We have, uh, BTO update. Brett.
Hey guys.
How are you? This is exciting.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me as always. It's good to see you guys. Get to look at my ugly mug today. So.
What's that thing hanging behind you? Is that like Christmas decorations? That gold thing?
It's, uh, feathers, like an Indian feather.
Oh, that's really nice.
Yeah, thanks. Well, thanks for having me, guys. I know it's been a busy night tonight, so I'll, uh, I'll crank through this and feel free to stop me, obviously. And I'll happy to answer questions at the end. Uh, I'll jump in with our DMX numbers. I know you guys have, uh, seen these numbers, but just for anyone that's on the call here. Our February occupancy, uh, closed at about, um, 66.5%, which was, uh, down, uh, only 3% year over year for February. Room nights on the books. Remember, we'll talk to you guys about occupancy and room nights going forward. Uh, room nights on the books, uh, were down 4.8% year over year, uh, as a whole for the winter season. So in the entire winter to date, uh, nights on the books are down, uh, 6% year over year. Um, where occupancy is down about, uh, 8.6, uh, year over year. And then March, you know, we still have numbers because as John was saying, as Eric mentioned, you know, after this weekend, uh, things are going to change. Um, but we did have March room nights on the books, um, through this timeframe and we were down about 1% um, year over year. Talk to you a little bit about some web stats, just because we've got some stuff from the state to compare us to now as well. Um, you know, as you've heard us say in the past, our website's really been performing very strongly. You know, there's definitely an interest out there for traveling. Um, we are currently year to date, our visitation is up 38% year over year, uh, which is very comparable to what the state is seeing as well. Uh, so you know, some positive news there. Um, Austin and our PR department, uh, just had her virtual desk side meetings, which is a little different this year. Uh, but she met with over 15 journalists, uh, who contribute to about 50 publications from our top, uh, um, target media lists. Um, some of those being the Chicago Tribune, New York Times, USA Today, Washington Post, uh, Conde Nast and Travel and Leisure, just some of them. And we're talking summer and fall with all of our media. Um, and the, the things that they're honing in on, which is really good for us, is they're looking at safety and responsible ways to travel. Uh, ways to give back, uh, inclusivity and, uh, distance experiences, which really, uh, positions Breckenridge in a really good position there for, for that kind of media. Um, what else I got here for you guys? The, uh, business survey that went out for Walkable Maine and the resident survey. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about this in the resiliency meeting this week, but just so you guys know, the, uh, we are up to 183 businesses have responded to that. And 451 residents and all of those have been completed, um, completion rate of 100%. So people have gone in and actually finished all the way through, which is, uh, very promising. We have another, uh, one Breckenridge, our guest nominations coming up. We've got 15 businesses, uh, that were nominated again this month. And, uh, just a few of those were the, uh, Breckenrescue, uh, Resort Lift Department. Uh, the Rec Center again was nominated, Gene Petros and, uh, Ski Country Resorts, just to name a few of those. And along with those awards, we thought it might be good to tell you guys that Holly Blando, who is our marketing manager, I'm sure all you guys know Holly. She was nominated and won the outstanding sustainability, stability volunteer award from HC3. For an outstanding volunteer in our community, uh, who works to inspire others to protect the planet. So I thought that was really nice and wanted to give her a little shout out and let you guys know it's nice. And she, she's very, uh, involved in our Be Like Breckenridge Responsible. Um, campaign that we've been working on as well, platform. So it's nice to see her recognized for that. And then finally, just a reminder for spring, you know, since we've been talking about this so much, just making sure everyone knows that. All of our media is still, uh, pushing to our safety page. It's still our number one visited page on the site. Um, we've amplified our messaging to people that have already been vaccinated to make sure that they understand they need to wear their mask as well still. And then, uh, Rachel has gone ahead and done some, um, social posts on Facebook and Instagram stories, actually, spring stories. And it's really focusing on safety during spring break, um, things like social distancing, responsible practices, dining limitations, mask wearing, of course. And then the need for reservation. So that's, uh, what we've got going on right now, just a little bit, but.
That's great. Thanks, Brett. Uh, questions?
Um, so you said 66% occupancy in February. And do you know what our normal for March? You said 1%, it was 1% below, but.
I, uh, I don't have that number. I can get that for you guys though, but I don't have that number. Yeah.
Okay, I just, I'm just curious. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
From, from, you know, your experience and your relationships with other people in your trade. Do you think we're going to just be nuts this summer, once this COVID thing is, is, some people feel a little bit safer? Do you think we're, do you think people are going, like last summer was crazy, uh, just people coming up here? Do you think it's going to be the same this summer? Or do you think there'll be a little bit of a decline?
I think, you know, just, you know, from what we hear in the industry, Jeffrey, not just us, I mean, everyone.
Yeah, that's.
Whether that's beach or mountains or, you know, whatever their favorite destination was. I think, you know, everyone's going to be traveling and just getting out. Everyone's cooped up. So I think it's just, it's going to happen. It's just a matter of where they're going to go.
Heard the phrase revenge travel.
Revenge travel. I've heard that too.
Really?
I have not. That is, it's, it sounds about right.
Yeah.
Anything else for Brett?
Uh, any chance we could get a sneak peek into what those results are about Walkable Maine, or do we have to wait on that?
That's a big question I can ask though.
That's okay. I can wait. I can be patient. It's.
Erin, I'll, we'll have that meeting tomorrow and I'll make sure you guys have the slide deck from Bill, um, in the afternoon.
Thanks, Shannon. Perfect.
It's great to see all you guys. Thanks for having me again. I appreciate it. Always happy to answer questions anytime.
You've done great work, man.
Love your feathers.
Thanks.
All right, we have, uh, first readings tonight. We have the first read, uh, second reading of, uh, second readings of. Council Bill number six, series 2021, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 12. Title five, the Breckenridge Town Code Concerning Compostable Plastic Bags. Tim?
This ordinance comes on for second reading, as you mentioned. Currently, the town's ordinance is provide for a plastic bag ban. That will come into effect September 1st of this year. This ordinance, uh, will amend the plastic bag ban to clarify. That compostable bags will also be banned under the general rubric of a plastic bag ban. Um, and there are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, questions for Tim? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this second and final reading? You have 30 seconds. All right, there is no public comments. Public comment is closed. Is there a motion?
Uh, in second reading, I move we pass Council Bill number six, series 2021, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion in the second. Any further discussion from the council?
Who, uh, got that second?
All of them.
Okay, you're gonna call, okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Jello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. For first readings this evening, we have, uh, the Council Bill number seven, series 2021. An ordinance providing for the vacation of a right of way portion of 4 o'clock road. Tim?
In January, the council, uh, was approached by a property owner along 4 o'clock road right of way. With a request to, that the council vacate a small portion of the unused 4 o'clock road right of way. Which is in essence, these folks' front yard. The council reacted favorably at the work session discussion in January. We actually got a formal. Application for vacation that complies with our ordinance. Uh, this ordinance, if it's adopted on second reading, will vacate a small portion of the 4 o'clock, uh, road right of way as requested.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? You have 30 seconds. And with no public comment, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number seven, series, uh, 2021, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. There's a motion in the second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Jello.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have three resolutions this evening. The first is resolution number six, series 2021. Resolution making supplemental appropriations to the 2020 town budget. Welcome back, Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So once our budget for the year has been adopted, the mayor that we amend that is by a resolution to provide for supplemental appropriations to that previously approved budget. These two resolutions are for that purpose. The first one for the 2020 budget. If approved, would increase expenses in the budget by approximately 3.3 million, which is detailed in the memo in your packet. But that amount is also offset by an increase to revenue of approximately $1.6 million. The second resolution after that is a much shorter one, and that one is concerning the 2021 budget. And that would simply increase the 2021 budget by the $25,000.
Any questions? For the staff? Know anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Please use Q and A function. And public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number six, series 2021, a resolution making supplemental appropriations to the 2020 town budget. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a resolution number seven, series 2021, a resolution making supplemental appropriations to the 2021 budget. Leslie's already explained this one to us. Are there any other questions for her? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this? You have 30 seconds. How much snow are we supposed to get? What's the word Dennis?
It's still up in the air.
It's mostly a front rainstorm, front range, two to five feet.
Yeah. Peak might get five feet.
Us two to five inches.
What are we going to get Dennis?
Two to five inches, who knows?
No, we'll get more than that.
Bet you a, bet you a cup of coffee.
Oh, that's a bet right there.
Wow. I bet, well, I bet we'll get closer to a foot than, than five inches.
Would it be nice? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion Jeffrey?
I move we pass resolution number seven, series 2021, a resolution making supplemental appropriations to the 2021 town budget.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Yeah, I don't know.
Roll call.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Final resolution is resolution number eight, series 2021. It's a resolution approving a notice of environmental use restrictions, second water plant.
As a condition of the receipt of certain state funds in connection with the construction of the second water plant. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment requires that this land use restriction be executed by the town and recorded. It essentially deals with a circumstance that James Phelps mentioned to the council this afternoon. Basically, in connection with the second water plant site, there was a small amount of contaminated soil that was discovered. It was removed and replaced and has been capped to protect it. This land use restriction will require that that be kept in place. And if there's any reason to breach the cap or to get near it, we'll have to get a hold of CDPAG. The document is in improper form. I have certainly no objection to the resolution or to the approval of the land use restriction.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this final resolution this evening? You have 30 seconds. Please use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. Five feet on the front range is going to screw a lot of stuff up.
Oh yeah, like it could, it could clog up I-70, which could make us having a pretty nice weekend. Not business wise, but certainly.
For you.
I'm taking that bet about a coffee back. I think Jeffrey's right. We'll get a little more than that up here.
All right, there you go. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number eight, series 2021, a resolution approving a notice of environmental use restrictions at the second water plant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have one final bit of voting tonight. Childcare Advisory Committee. We have a motion to add Scott Perlo back on to the advisory committee.
Right, he's on, so we would just retain him for another three year term. So I can make that motion.
Please do.
Okay, I moved that the town council appoint Scott Perlo to a three year term on the town council's childcare advisory committee.
Oh, I'll second that. It was a good motion.
Thank you.
Motion. Any further discussion about Scott?
He's wonderful and the kids love him and he does great things for our community. We're very, very lucky to have him.
That is great to hear. Roll call please Helen.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, thank you Helen. We have planning matters, planning commission decisions for the third, the second of March 2021. Are there any call ups this evening? Planning Commission Decision Stand is presented. Reporter, the town manager and staff, Rick.
I have a few items for the council. First item is CDOT is planning a semi truck chain up station for southbound semis going through, in the town of Blue River, basically across from their town hall along highway nine. Forty to 50 feet wide and 2,500 feet long. And it's only would be about 30 feet off the Blue River. Obviously, Blue River is highly opposed to this and they would like the county and Breckenridge to join them in opposition. I told them I would bring it to the council. All right, here. They're also planning a northbound chain up station in the area of Alma for trucks going northbound that would be coming through Breck and there's no place for them to, to take their chains back off. They, their intent is that trucks that chain up at Alma would leave them on all the way up to I-70.
Also, also the intent, I believe, is that people who get off in Frisco would leave them on all the way through town, all the way through Breckenridge.
Yep.
I'll tell you another thing we should be concerned about is that by creating these chain up stations, are they really pushing to promote this as more of a truck route? You know, along highway nine to get trucks off of I-70 and I don't know, but I, I can imagine how we would feel if CDOT came in and said they're going to put a chain up station. You know, a 2,500 foot long chain up station that'll hold 10 to 12 semi trucks in town and so.
Yeah, next to the wetland.
Yeah.
Next to the river. And Shannon, I did talk to Shannon Smith about this and she said that it's a pretty undesirable route for trucks. And it is limited by, you know, some of our roundabout sizes and also the Hoosier turning radiuses, so, or radii. So, you know, there are some limiting factors. It wouldn't just become the next I-70, which I thought was nice information. So that's why I'm sharing it. But still, I, I would love to, if we can sign on to say this is a terrible idea, I would love to do that.
Everybody good with that?
State highways other than I-70 or other than an interstate?
Do they have them? I, I don't know Dennis. Where they have it.
I was going to bring this up on automatic, so I'm glad this, yeah, I'm, I'm all in.
Okay, line is already an emergency route, but let's keep it an emergency route.
And the lighting, I mean.
Can you imagine living in that thing?
I can't imagine living just down in Breckenridge from that thing.
Yeah, no, it's a terrible idea. Strongly worded letter, Rick. We're in.
Okay.
Yeah, agreed.
So today we had a meeting with the managers of the county to discuss in one 1B4, which goes into effect for vaccinations, is slated to go into effect on March 21st. But there's always a little bit of flexibility in that day, but right now, March 21st, 1B4, this is the largest group that, you know, is over 2 million people statewide, but it includes continuity of government. And so we wanted to get on the same page on what that's going to mean. It is going to include, and the board of health approved these groups earlier today. It is going to include elected officials. So all of you would be included in that group if you haven't yet. You know, come into play as one of the other categories. It also includes food service workers. So certainly Eric can get in and do that one too. But for our other town staff, it's going to include any forward facing employees that deal with the public. So any public facing employees that we have, you know, at our rec center, ice rink, et cetera, those will be included in that group. It will include our water operators, our transit operators are included in that group. So now is the time for you to get on and pre-register. If for some reason you receive a notice that you were chosen, it's a notice, you can't really accept that because you do have to attest to that until they've opened 1B4 up. So there are some errors being made where some people are, because you go in a register under government. But once 1B4 is up, you should be pre-registered. If you get chosen, it'll still be by lottery. If you get chosen, then you're eligible to go, give it done. Any questions on that? We expect the House to vote on the, the the federal relief bill tomorrow and then to go to the president. There have been some amendments to it. We there will be some reduction in what I think local municipalities are going to receive. There's also a chance that it could be split up into a couple of years. Some this year and some in 22. That's what we're hearing, but we should know soon how much money we would be eligible to receive at this year. And the last thing I just wanted to run by you. I'm, I'm sure many of you know that the, we no longer have a, a vendor to run the speakeasy theater. So the person who had been running it for years has gotten out of business and that, you know, we haven't been in a hurry to replace that vendor because of COVID and we're also using that site for a testing site reveal health. But we want to start moving on that because, you know, it's when we are able to to be in there, we'd like to have somebody in place to do that. We know that we have interest from local nonprofit. We also, there has been interest expressed from private individuals that would, you know, run it as a for-profit type business, similar to how it was operated before. My recommendation is that we should be working with our local nonprofit that we have supported for years, which is the Breck Film Fest. We should treat them the same way we treat backstage theater. And allowing them to go in and create a business plan and operating plan to use a town asset for the purposes that it was designed. So I think, I think that we should not be doing an RFP is my recommendation. We should not be trying to look at, you know, any for-profit things that we should just be working with our local nonprofit film fest. And making sure that we can come up with an agreeable operating plan for that facility that checks the boxes for the town, checks the boxes. You know, with the, the BCA, the B, so it's a town facility. We asked BCA to manage it for us. As a town facility, I believe you should set direction on if you want that to be operated or you want to work in partnership with our, our local nonprofit film provider that we know has been, you know, contacted me probably over a year ago and said, should an opportunity ever arise, the Film Fest would really be interested in, in learning and taking over that model. And I, I think they understand at least some of, of what's a requirement. Obviously, we want to continue to have first run movies there. In addition to the other types of film festival activities they do, we want to be able to engage our local community in uses, whether it's children's movies, adolescent movies, those types of things, and to still work in partnership with you know, other entities when we need to, whether it's the BTO holding their winter preview meeting at 8:30 in the morning in that facility, which we've done in the past. And, and those are the types of things that I think are still going to be important uses of that. So I want to make sure that you do you support my recommendation? So then we can start to work with a BCA and kind of putting together a little group that could evaluate, you know, a business plan with the Film Fest.
How's everybody feel about that?
Rick, to be clear, they, you know, we, they would do, you know, the artsy stuff, but also run
first runs.
Regular films, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just can't read those subtitles.
I, I think one thing that's going to be important is that they're open.
Yeah.
A lot. I mean, it's, you know, they're a funded organization. I, even during the slow season, I think they should at least be open on the weekends. And I think that should be part of, you know, what we ask, that and, and really some more adolescent. You know, place to go for some of the kids, some of the middle school and high school kids and even the elementary school kids that they do some, you know, matinee style stuff and maybe some early evening stuff that is, that is very kid centric, so the kids can go themselves and, you know, we need to make sure this facility gets used. I, I liked the last owner, but I hated the fact that it was closed as much as it was. And I think that's important for our community to have that available, so. Just saying some things I'd add to the, you know, what the BCA is going to ask of whoever takes it over.
I fully support it, Rick, and I also think that it's going to be important for our, as our town comes out of this COVID and we start to recover and we have a place to go.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm.
I agree. I'm supportive of this route going with the nonprofit and I think Breck Film has a history of being good community partners.
Yep.
Yeah, I completely agree. Yeah, especially with what Eric said about it being open and having it available to, to our younger demographic. I think it's great.
I, I agree with all comments so far. Great. Anything else, Rick?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff.
Oh, Eric, sorry. Can I ask, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but, and I meant to ask James earlier. But do we have any updates on the eminent domain situation?
We are in our, can I go ahead and answer that quickly?
Yeah, please.
We, we've had our kind of final negotiation with that last property owner. It's really boiling down to a couple of trees and that are in an area and we Tim and, and James met and we threw around some ideas and we developed a strategy and James is going to approach that owner with that strategy. I'm not sure if there's a timeline that's given. I hope there is, but this is really kind of our last effort to try to resolve this. We still feel that we have time to do this because if we need to go in the eminent domain route, we'll, we should be able to still get that clearance to allow us to do what we need to do. to do what we need to do this summer.
Excellent. Great question, Carol. All right, let's go to reporter, the mayor and council members. We did have a cast meeting last week. Did we? Yeah, we had cast.
Yeah.
What did we talk about?
One of the things you may hear about is Summit County is looking at creating a disposal district, which has to do, you know, there's some Colorado laws that allows them to do that and how it governs trash services, etc. It gives them more flexibility. Their hands are tied as a statutory entity and what they can do around trash disposal. So as a district, they have more flexibility to do that in the future. They're not looking to add any type of a you know, a mill or anything like that as a revenue source. It's more of a procedural thing we want to do. We spent a lot of time on the COVID update, looking at that. You know, we were gonna talk about a a letter to Polus when we heard the hint that they, he may drop the mask mandate, but we were assured that wasn't gonna happen and it hasn't. And then somebody just raised the question about is there, you know, is anybody interested in looking at entertainment districts countywide? And, you know, that's entertainment districts is something that has been broached here in Breck by some people. It really allows you to take an area and have multiple liquor licenses in that area. And then the, you know, cross paths within that district and that. We haven't seen great value in moving forward with any of that stuff here and it does, there's one in the county, I think in Copper, probably one of the areas in the Copper Resort is an entertainment district. So you could have multiple liquor licenses in there. Other than that, nobody else is looking at it. So.
Thanks, Rick. Covered me as usual. Creative arts. Kelly left, so maybe nothing.
Dick.
Nick. Well, I'm on. Yeah, we, I'm trying to remember, do we have a meeting since the last meeting, Rick? I don't think we did. So really, the big update Rick gave with regards to the speakeasy. We have a meeting, I believe, on Monday.
All right. Anything from you, Kelly, for creative?
No.
Okay. Events, Carol?
I think Shannon hit most of it and next work session, we'll have a big conversation about that.
Excellent. BHA and BTO, Dennis.
Well, I think Brett took care of the BTO, but I hope everyone got a chance to watch the Barney Ford special. It was awesome. And if you didn't, there's more opportunities to watch it online. BHA, we have a board meeting tomorrow afternoon and the replay, a different subject, replacement of French golf sign, French golf signs will be sent to the fabricator soon. And they're gonna have a QR code on them so that visitors will be able to read the signs in Spanish.
Oh, nice.
Really, really nice update. And then I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Dennis. That's great. Bosag. Iran.
We, we did not have a meeting since our last meeting.
All right. Childcare Advisory Committee.
I think we covered that earlier.
Beat that one to death. Social equity.
The last meeting, I think we had, it was largely housekeeping meeting. We elected a chair, Alexandria Carnes elected a vice chair, Taja Greer approved the bylaws and I think best of all, especially for Shannon, we established a standing meeting. That's all set there. Otherwise, a page under commissions is live on the social equity commission. So people can find information there. And I think that's it.
Awesome. Excellent. Any other matters? Jeffrey already had his taken care of by the boss.
Yeah.
Oh, I forgot to mention, I did Breck Buzz last week, so that was great. With Haley and Alexandria, the newly appointed chair joined us just to give us a little bit of non-council perspective. So it was in a huge update. We're still getting our feet under us, but but that went well. And I figured since I get to choose who goes next, since I did the last Breck Buzz, I was gonna pass the baton to Kelly, you know, just we talked a lot about childcare through this subgroup. I think personally, as a non-parent, I learned a lot about the program. So I'd love Kelly to do the next Breck Buzz on childcare.
I like this new, this is our new thing now.
Yeah.
You tag the one after you. So this is awesome. Kelly, you're it.
Yep, I will. And actually, I'll talk to Haley, but I think, I mean, I don't know that much about transit, but I'm gonna try to do maybe childcare and transit since we're gonna put the survey out for both.
Yeah, you know, maybe talk to James a bit about some some numbers and stuff.
We will talk to lots of other people who know far more than me, but and and, you know, just what some of the issues are, but I think that'd be two great topics to talk about.
Perfect. Do you have any other matters, Kelly?
I don't tonight.
Okay. Carol, did you have anything else for other matters?
No.
All right, Dennis?
Good, Carol, Carol brought it up, so we're covered.
Dick?
Oh, good, thanks.
Sweet. Erin?
All good, thank you.
Ricky, had your hand up.
I thought Carol was gonna raise another issue.
All right. Do you wanna?
I need to do a little more research, but but I can bring it up in as a general concept.
Might wanna see, I I think the council might be supportive, especially if we can keep that money directed locally here.
Yeah, of course. So there is an ongoing effort in the state. And there's been a new push, FERC has been involved in this. They're involved in the fall and they're involved now, but it's called the Left Behind Workers Fund. What it does, it's a form of direct assistance to community members that didn't qualify for federal dollars. And assuming everything passes tomorrow, there's gonna be another round of federal dollars. But community members that don't get those stimulus stimulus dollars don't get unemployment benefits. So this fund is a way to support those community members that are largely undocumented immigrants. So I know the Left Behind Workers Fund, different municipalities have contributed to this fund. I know Denver did. I know a couple others, but I think this is an opportunity for our us to support those workers that are falling through the cracks here. And we can do that either, I think, through supporting the FERC in their efforts or researching this fund directly.
That's great. Awesome. Keep us updated on that one, would you, Carol?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Great. So is it, you'd be supportive of us looking into this further and then we could come back with maybe a proposal?
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right. I spoke to Colorado Public Radio today about spring break. So who knows? I talked for a while. You can take a lot of my stuff out of context at any point, so.
What did you talk about?
Spring break.
Oh, okay.
I, you know, I've just been trying to get gets a little more messaging on what we've been talking about with masks and you know, all of a sudden, every other state's starting to drop all their protocol and I I'd like to just get to the end of March at this point, you know, just to get through the the bulk of our spring break with with, you know, and keep everybody safe. And then and then we'll see what happens. Then we can reevaluate mask mandates and all that stuff, I think, after after we're we're out of this. So.
Yeah, I mean, if frontline employees don't even become eligible for vaccines till the 25th, then we definitely want, I mean, you know, the end of this month might not be quite enough to get a bunch of those people vaccinated, but that's, that's the way I see.
Yeah, I agree with Kelly. That's sort of what I said to her. Really, what we're trying to do is protect our frontline employees that don't. They have no option but to stand there and just take the abuse from the people that feel that what we're doing is wrong. And I just don't, you know. We've been talking about this now for a year, the same stuff. And the fact that we're still talking about it for a year shows how important it is, but also shows that people do not learn. So there you go.
There was a meme that said, you know, I don't know why people are still wearing their masks, either below their nose or up on their chin. Like you can teach a toddler to potty train quicker than you can teach people to wear a mask, right?
I, it's unreal.
Hey, I have another matter.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, you know, we've been doing that dog waste cleanup every Monday at most Mondays at Cotter Park. Well, we we might kind of expand and maybe go to the B and B Trailhead, which is like a petri dish and maybe up on Sally Barber Trailhead. But there again, if we get a big dump, that could be, that that could be, but anyway.
What kind of dump?
That wasn't, that wasn't even a bun. Yeah, if we get a big snowstorm, that's right. Yeah. So anyway, just.
All right.
Stay tuned.
Wait, that reminded me of one thing. My kids are asking if we can please do cleanup day this year. So I'm hoping that we will. I don't know.
I'd I'd love to do that. That's an outdoor event. It'd be great if we could do something.
Do it later in the, like later, more in Juneish, not Mayish.
Yeah, we'll see. That's a, that's a great suggestion. Anything else, gang? All right. Great spending the night with you as usual. Have a wonderful week. See you soon.
You all.
Thank you.